Two discussions, presentations this evening. And so I'm going to call the September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty work session of the city of McMinnville, the city council to order. And Claudia, I'll call on you to just take our, our roll call.
Counselor Drabkin.
Present.
Counselor Garvin. I don't think I saw Counselor Garvin yet. Uh, Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
On me.
Counselor Stassen. I don't think I saw Counselor Stassen yet. Uh, Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Menke.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
And I'm here. Thank you, Claudia. I know we have a few others that are on the call this evening. Uh, I know that, uh, Jennifer, you sent out a notice to the Budget Committee members if they would like to participate. I just recognized for the record that Counselor Adam Garvin has joined us. And so with that, our first item on our agenda this evening is a discussion on the McMinnville Reserve and balance, uh, fund balance policy. And so Jennifer, I will turn this discussion and presentation over to you.
Right, great. Um, thanks so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counselors, members of the Budget Committee and public, interested public who's here. This will be my first presentation on Zoom, so let's see if I can get the screen share right. Are you able to see it?
Yes, Jennifer.
Oh, sweet, great. So, um, what we're here to discuss is, um, the, a proposed reserve and fund balance, um, policy. And the Audit Committee has been working on this. And you, in the packet, there is included, um, the draft policy as well as, um, some background materials and a staff report. And this work session, just the objective here is to get feedback from council in particular about, um, whether, about your, um, your views on the policy as, um, presented, um, whether or not we need to make some changes, go back to the drawing board, anything like that. We're hoping to get your feedback, um, as part of this discussion, um, as well as answer any questions, or concerns you might have. So, um, before I kind of launch into it, we do have a couple of members of the Audit Committee here. I don't know if, um, Mayor Hill or Council President Menke, if, if you want to add anything at the outset, or just pipe in as, as you'd like as we go along.
Well, I, I think just for the record, um, we, uh, have, um, three individuals that are on the Audit Committee, which would be, uh, uh, a citizen liaison, Peter Hofstetter, who's the former, um, CEO of the hospital. Uh, Peter has been on our Budget Committee and is on the Audit Committee, Council President Menke and myself. And then we, in our meetings, uh, we've had, uh, Jennifer, and if I'm not mistaken, at certain meetings, we've had staff involved in that as we've gone through, our learning discussion in preparation for bringing some of the, uh, high level thoughts that Jennifer is going to bring this evening. Uh, Kelly, any other thoughts that you might have?
Uh, I just want to welcome Allison Seeler, I believe Nancy Hart. And, uh, I'm not sure I see anyone else that's from the Budget Committee. So, at any rate, welcome.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
All right, super. So, um, as we alluded to, the Audit Committee has been meeting. We've had three meetings in, um, July and August. And we've reviewed the city's budget and, and actual fund balance trends. We've looked at a lot of materials and literature about best practice that's out there in terms of municipal reserve policies, um, that kind of thing, and gave guidance to staff in terms of how we might want to make some updates to the existing, um, Mc, City of McMinnville Reserve and Fund Balance Policy. So, um, in terms of what the, the Audit Committee was considering, there are a number of things, um, best practices, uh, risk that our city in particular, um, may have, or actually, in our case, there's some good news here that we don't have. Also looking at what our actuals have been and how these kind, how these things come together to, um, to, uh, drive us to make some changes in terms of what our policies are and how we might approach things like budget and those kinds of, uh, financial considerations. So, we spent, um, a good amount of the very first meeting with our, um, municipal advisor. So that's the, um, contracted organization that's a fiduciary to us in terms of looking at our debt in particular and giving us guidance around that. And so his, um, his complete presentation is in the packet, but I pulled one of the slides from his presentation that I think is really relevant for us in the municipal sector, which is, um, in terms of credit worthiness, what are the kinds of things, what are the things that go into building our credit score? And this is what Moody follows in terms of its guidelines for giving us a credit score. And so there are some kinds of items that we don't have a whole lot of control over, to do with our economy, um, what's happening with our pension rates, that kind of thing. But there are other things which we can have control over or influence in terms of having, um, as positive a financial outlook, um, as well as, um, credit worthiness rating, um, that we can. So, one of the things that I think drove the, um, made us, made it clear that we needed to take a look at this, was the fact that we could see our fund balance trends had been going down. Um, and we do have control over that. We decide what we put in the budget, right? So that has a direct line on how much money is left each year at, um, at the end of the day. So, those were, um, the considerations in the discussion with, um, PFM, our financial, our, um, our municipal advisor. Then we looked at our numbers in particular. So here's, this is, um, our budgeted, uh, general fund reserve trends. So you can see that from fiscal thirteen through to the most recent budget in fiscal twenty-one, we are on a downward slope in terms of what our financial plan for the year, um, actually would ha, if everything came out exactly, our crystal ball was completely, um, accurate, this is what would happen at the end of the year. And one thing that, um, we haven't talked a lot about, but one thing that I look at traditionally, um, in my career as a finance director is, what are we budgeting on current revenue? So, um, current expenses against the current year revenues. And every year since FY thirteen, our plan has been to spend more than we expect to bring in, in any given year. So that's, that's something I think to keep an eye on. Then the next slide shows how we actually ended up the year. So you can see that our actuals aren't as, don't push us into the negative as, as much as our budget does. So on an actual basis, in FY nineteen, because we're just not done with FY twenty to know where we're at, that, that hit kind of right at what the current budget, um, the current, uh, policy is to leave twenty-five, uh, percent on the table as a reserve. So, on an actual basis, we actually, we haven't, um, gone below our reserve levels yet. But looking at the trends, one would suspect that in FY twenty, we're likely to be lower. So we'll see what actually happens. Hopefully in the next month or two, I'll have, um, a better handle on what that is. So here's, here's the good news in terms of the City of McMinnville's actual risk profile. The general fund revenues, so this is, um, this is something that is common to Oregon municipalities, is that because we are property tax based, that shelters us from a lot of the downside risk that many jurisdictions across the country face in terms of, um, down, downsloping business cycles, right? So, um, when, for example, and we've talked about the, um, GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association's, um, recommendation of a minimum of two months, that's for the entire nation. And so we are much, our revenue picture is much less risky than most municipal organizations in this country. Um, then in terms of McMinnville specifically, the most, the most highly volatile, um, types of revenues, which, um, tend to be the charges for services, um, or licenses, that kind of thing. They don't make up that much of our revenue budget, but this is where we need to be, um, watching things. And for us, in the current COVID situation, the, the charges for services, where our exposure is, is, um, in the, the service industry, the tourism industry. And so our, our ability also to, um, to run our, um, parks and, uh, fee for service activities that, um, take place in normal times just aren't happening because of, you know, the reality of having businesses closed and needing to, um, practice social distancing in the city and such, so. Here's also, um, this is a little deeper dive in terms of our property tax specifically in the City of McMinnville, because this makeup can look different across the different municipalities, um, around the state. So, I've just put here a page that comes from our annual financial statements, our CAFR. And last year, it's on page one forty-seven. It shows our top ten pro, uh, property taxpayers make up less than ten percent of our total tax base, which means we have a very diversified tax base, also just here in this city, which is also good news for us from a risk perspective. But as, as I noted in terms of the COVID, um, issue, because we have, um, we have a strong tourism economy, and that has been particularly hard hit, um, the impact more generally on our property tax revenues, they're not apparent yet, but we may see some things that, uh, begin, that may cause us to, um, have some concerns in terms of our overall property tax picture. So just something to be thinking about for us. Does, I think I'll, I'll stop here. Are there any, any questions or anything you want to get into in terms of the data, uh, before I keep going?
I had a couple of questions if I could.
Okay.
Okay, first, thank, no, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, um, first, Jennifer, I just want to say thank you for, uh, taking this deep dive into the budget. The reconciliation of the estimated budgets that we do every year versus the actuals is really appreciated because I think it provides a lot better context for the reality of our, um, ending fund balance situation. Um, I had a couple of questions about the implications of some of the closures that we've had with COVID nineteen on the budget. And I know you probably haven't gotten the numbers yet, but I wonder if you have a sense of whether the, um, like, for example, with the parks budget, we have estimates of a, you know, a bunch of revenue to cover park services. And because those aren't happening or haven't happened to the scale that we're used to, we've, you know, reduced staffing levels and, um, reduced a lot of line items. Do you have a sense yet of how that washes out in terms of net cash positive versus net cash negative for that particular area?
You know, I, I don't have data on that yet, um, but I think you've actually hit on the two major issues that are going on. So I don't know if people will recall, we did, in the FY twenty-one budget process, Susan and her team did, uh, an amazing job, I thought, projecting what near-term revenue losses were going to look like. And you might remember back in March or April, we were all thinking, okay, this is going to be done by the summer, right? That was kind of what, what we thought. So we did bake into our current budget, um, approximately half a million dollars in revenue losses that we knew or anticipated would come on board through June thirty. Um, so our beginning fund balance, we reduced by what we could anticipate. We knew we weren't going to get through June. But we had, just, no one knew. And so we anticipated things would be pretty much up, back up and running, starting July one in the summer. And so those revenues obviously are not going to come in as we anticipated. But on the flip side, we have not brought back all of the temporary staffing, the seasonal staffing, that kind, the, the cost structure that underlies a lot of the revenue program. My assumption, my assumption is we're going to be, um, revenue loss against, um, how much we've reduced expenses. My guess is we're going to be worse off, um, that it will be a net negative, but I do not know that now. And that's part of what we are wanting to look at, um, once we can get the fiscal year close, see what our starting number is, and then get a full quarter, four months in to see for our mid-year review where we're looking. But it is our intention to factor the revenue and the expense to project that into the current year as part of that assessment.
I just have one other question if I could, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt, and if you had a moment.
Go ahead. Well, Sal, just before we end that, I, I have one that just goes to your question. If I remember, and I don't know if this is fair, Jennifer, you know, in the area of recreation and especially in our sports, uh, the Joe Dancer sports, uh, area, are we not trying to be somewhere at about a seventy percent recovery of cost when we're doing our summer, um, programs?
You know, that level of detail, I have not, I could not speak to. What are the different?
I just remember in the back of my mind at our Budget Committees, you know, I, that, that number stuck out, and that could help answer a little bit of Sal's question. If, you know, if we're not having revenue come in, but the expenses are going down, I know it wouldn't be a complete, uh, following because we do have some ongoing expenses, whether you're running the program or not.
Right.
I, I'm sorry, Sal, go ahead.
No, I, I appreciate that clarification there because I, I think that's, that's right. That was what I was kind of getting at, is that we have, uh, we've set a cost recovery level at a little bit less than, you know, dollar for dollar on the cost for services. But, um, the other, the other question that I had, uh, and this may be something that you don't have, maybe Heather has this information, but, um, do we have a sense yet of what the housing starts are looking like in, in, um, in McMinnville? I, I, my assumption, of course, is that, uh, housing is down and, and, you know, nationwide, but I really don't have any facts to back that up. So I was wondering if we had any sense of how that was tracking for the current budget year.
Um, that I've not dug into. Heather, are you here?
Yes, so I can respond to that. So Counselor, we haven't seen a decrease in our housing starts or permitting, um, outside of what we had already anticipated based on land supply. So interestingly, um, our development side of our business is still, uh, maintaining as predicted at this point in time. And we've had conversations with developers locally as well as statewide about it, and it's just still considered a hot housing market.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay, great.
And thank you, Sal, for those questions. Any other questions that anyone would have for Jennifer at this point? To clarify any, uh, any questions that had come to your mind? Seeing no hands raised, uh, Jennifer, feel free to continue.
I will keep going. Um, so here, this is another, um, one of the, one of the important things we wanted to do is also make sure that our, whatever policy we have, and this has been a tradition here, that it's based in best practice and that we're following the guidance of the nationally recognized organizations in the field. Um, that this isn't us kind of making it up as we go along. So, um, the two main organizations that, um, I've looked to throughout my career and that clearly McMinnville has as well, is the Government Finance Officers Association. So this is the main, um, national level organization that, um, helps municipalities in particular, but also school districts and other local governments to, um, do the, the best possible, um, financial, all aspects of financial reporting, budgeting, that will best serve communities. As well as, um, the GASBIE, that's the Government Accounting Standards Board. So they set GAAP, generally acceptable, generally accepted accounting principles for government. In the for-profit and nonprofit sector, it's FASBIE, but we are governed, our GAAP is established by GASBIE. So, that's, um, that's the end of the kind of considerations, the literature, the things that we were looking at, the inputs to guide the conversation. So here, he, the next part of the presentation really is what are the elements that we included in this draft, um, Reserve and Fund Balance Policy? And so if you're, if you're in the packet, I'm trying to go there myself. It's the last item. Starting on page twenty-eight is the actual text of the Reserve and Fund Balance Policy. So I just, I think it's important to actually, I think, read out what the purpose is. So, uh, forgive me for reading, but, um, the, the purpose of our policy is that the City of McMinnville desires to establish a Reserve and Fund Balance, Balance Policy for all city funds that promotes responsible financial management by adhering to best practices and maintaining adequate levels of fund balance to mitigate current and future risks while assuring the delivery of quality, meaningful services to the community. This policy is intended to make the city more resilient and well positioned to ensure present and future municipal service levels, to withstand the next economic downturn or fiscal stress like natural disasters or other emergencies or revenue or cash shortfalls, to promote equitable and stable rate, charge and fee structures for the community, to protect the city's credit worthiness and our bond rating, to provide flexibility to respond to unanticipated opportunities, and finally, to consider long-term financial planning needs, including the retirement system rate increases. So this is the, um, the consensus purpose for, for the policy. Um, and then I'm going to go into some of the elements, um, that came up that guide what the other pieces of it are. So, in order to create, um, a prudent reserve level for the general fund, it needs to be realistic and achievable. And this really goes to the credit worthiness aspect. It was one of the things that our municipal advisor, Dan Brown, emphasized over and over again that, um, just, he did not feel that just shooting up in one year to where you want to be is the, is necessary. But what we do want to have is a plan and to make, to turn the curve and to do it in a realistic way and an achievable way. Then we also recognize that there's still a lot of financial uncertainty out there. So, um, the ability to move really quickly in this particular moment in our nation's history and Oregon's history, it's just, it's more constrained than it would be in practically any other given year, right? And then we also want to make sure that, um, the revenue picture remains comparatively stable. And so be, because, uh, as I discussed before, just the, the, this is one of the upsides of having a, a property tax-based system that, um, feeds local government. It's just, it's more stable, and so there's less urgency to, to tie up a lot more resources beyond the GFOA minimum. Let's see. So, in terms of the reserve calculation, the, the policy proposes doing this a little differently than we've done in the past. So just, um, and it also just makes it really clear what the elements are of the math that goes into it. So, we are defining reserves from a budgeted perspective, that it's going to be the sum of what we budget for contingencies, the unassigned ending fund balance, and if we establish them in the future, any capital savings reserve accounts for particular projects. Those would be the things that would add up to the reserve amount. Historically, McMinnville, we've been including all of the unrestricted fund balance, and that in our case includes the low SAP reserve. So that's, uh, the, the length of service award program for our volunteer firefighters. I think everyone on council anyways would, um, is familiar with that. And this is from an accounting perspective and is, you know, a strictly, um, when we're looking at our actuals, this is technically unrestricted money. And so it was completely proper to include it. But I, um, we discussed it and the Audit Committee recommends that we no longer include it, that we exclude it from the calculation. Because we, it's hard to imagine that the city would ever not, um, meet that, uh, commitment that it's made to its volunteer firefighters. Then on the expense side, so what you're putting, um, in the second piece of the calculation is operating expense. So we are proposing that we have the GFOA minimum of two months operating expense and reserve at the end of the year. And operating expense will be defined as your personnel cost plus the and operating expense will be defined as your personnel cost plus the materials and services carrying cost. Um, so we, we are deliberately excluding um large capital, um those kind of one-time things that can really skew your math here. So that's what's in the proposed budget. I mean, not budget, the proposed policy. Um, another component that's added to this um policy was the um the Audit Committee felt strongly, as did uh the city manager when they gave me initial feedback on the first version of the policy, that we really needed to have a stronger um stronger and clearer language on communications about reserve and reserve levels and what would trigger staff coming to council um outside of the budget cycle, where you traditionally talk about these things, um to discuss any significant changes in reserve projections. So the, the city budget process will continue to be the primary place where this is discussed and we do um some in-depth analysis and, you know, what if some scenarios, that kind of thing. But there were also criteria established for off-cycle discussions. An exam, and, and example of that is the already planned um mid-year FY21 review, because we just, we knew we'd have to go back and look at things, um given how uncertain the COVID situation made things. Um, so that's a, a new, um, and I think really positive component. Then another new component of the um fund balance policy is that we wanna set reserve targets for all of our funds. And the general fund gets the lion's share of the attention, but it's not the only fund that operates in the city, and it's certainly not the only um one of importance. They're, they're all important in terms of the services that we provide to the community. So this um policy does set up reserve standards for all, all funds, and those are based on the purpose and characteristics of the funds. And there's also an acknowledgement that there are, there's a difference between governmental and enterprise funds and how those reserves are calculated. So um, here's another place where I just pulled out a page from our CAFER so that you could see where these things are when you're looking at our financial statements. So for governmental funds, um, it's on page thirty-seven and it's gonna be on, you know, a similar page number um really every year in the CAFER. At the very bottom, I, can you see, can you see these? The type's kind of small, but at the bottom, it's the fund balances. And non-spendable and restricted are by definition not part of what would be in a reserve, but committed, assigned and unassigned fund balance categories are the things that typically would be included in a reserve. So just fun things you can find in your CAFER. Um, but in, when you're looking at proprietary funds, enterprise funds, so our business types, which actually will have fewer next year, the wastewater fund will be um our predominant enterprise fund next year. The way you define um, the way you're gonna define your um fund balance is the difference between current assets and current liabilities. And um, you know, because it's accounting, um, and GASP has its fund rules and of how we present these things, there is no subtotal. So this is not very transparent in our financial statements. And so it is my intention, I, I um I could not change how the reporting is in the financial statements because we have to follow GAAP, um, which is, you know, strictly defined by GASP and how these things look. But in the budget, um, I, I wanna work um in particular with Mike and his crew to figure out ways that we might be able to make this a little more transparent when we're looking at the budget. Um, but they have done, in particular wastewater, just a magnificent job of planning for future um, future needs. So we are extremely fortunate as a community to have to have this, you know, an essential service that is going to be able to fund its growth projects on a cash basis and not require going out to the debt markets for money. So that's a wonderful thing. Um, changes to the budget approach. So the traditional approach that we've really prioritized historically is looking at what are the strategic priorities for council and what the goal setting is. And a few years ago, all of the work that went into MAC Town, the strategic plan and the strategic priorities, this has been where we've really focused um our attention and where staff has delivered programming in the budget process. And because we're focusing on wanting to deliver on all of these really wonderful things that we know the community wants and we want to give it, bring these things to them, that's one of the drivers of prioritizing current spending. That's been happening the last several years over some longer-term financial discipline and financial planning. So I think the exu, I, I'm speculating, but I imagine the exuberance around all of the programs that we wanted to accomplish may have colored the way that we approached budget and we really looked at delivering on current services over, you know, longer-term financial base. So going forward, we're gonna add a couple things to our um, the ways staff is influenced in terms of what we come up with budget. And one of those is working on what our core services are across departments and then across the city, and that work is getting underway um this week. And also having a reserve target calculation that's a budget floor in our budget process going forward. So those are two new elements that we'll be adding to the mix. Um, and then the, the final thing in terms of the policy itself was there's just a little compliance cleanup um around GASP fifty-four requirements, just being really explicit about all of the um unreserved categories and how they are um which level of the organization can sequester funds um in what kinds of um balances. So it's, it's accounting hoo-ha. Nobody's interested, but it needs to be in the policy. So um, that is the end of the presentation. Um, how long did I talk? That was terrible. Oh, forty minutes. I'm so sorry. I hoped it would be half an hour. So.
And, and Jennifer, thank you so very much. And I would just remind everyone that although we may have an a tendency to ask very specific questions about current budget, what we're really focusing here is on our reserve policy. And, and so I would open it up to any questions or thoughts that the council would have on our reserve policy that we need to get back to Jennifer if we need to address some concerns that you have. So uh, I think what I will do is I'll, I'll start uh on my screen and Adam, any, anything that you might have uh for Jennifer as you've gone through this presentation?
Uh, thanks for all the information, Jennifer. It was very well put together and I didn't feel that you were over speaking at all. Um, as far as, you know, pulling out the the volunteer firefighter fund and, and the other, I think that's a, a good call so we know what our actual spendable reserve balance is um instead of kind of inflating it um to an extent. So I'm definitely in favor of what the Budget Committee presented with that. Um, and then, yeah, I would like a a hard line on our reserve and if we go below that um budget floor, then then we take actions. And I guess I'm up for, up for conversation from other counselors on what that number is and where they would like it, what those actions would be, but um, I think we should definitely have a policy in place that has very strict um approach to all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Let's move over to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't have too much to add uh beyond what Adam just said. I, I uh really agree with uh Adam, both in terms of uh appreciating uh Jennifer's presentation uh and also uh the uh changes to the uh, to the policy to make it more transparent.
Thank you, Sal. Uh, let's run over to Zach. Zach, thoughts that you might have?
Um, thank you. Uh, I guess thirding the um presentation um while it's still soaking in and appreciation of the presentation while it's still soaking in. Um, it was easy to understand and adjust as you went through that, which is no small feat. Um, couple quick specific questions. Um, and then Mayor, as you go through and call on us all, I hope you include the Budget Committee because we so rarely get to join forces and, and something so nuanced come up and we can hear from them as well. Um.
Thank you, Zach, yes.
Um, the, it, it, and maybe I inferred this or this was, was in there and it's a question, but are you saying we should look at, let's say we wanna get to X percent as a reserve or whatever, that's where we want that line to be, the, the, the bottom line? Were you, were you saying, okay, and that, if that's eight point, eight percentage points away, I recommend you do two per, points per year to phase us down? Is, is, did I read that or understand that right?
Yeah, actually, I, I realized after I wrapped up, I failed to mention that really important detail, which is part of the policy and we want your feedback on tonight, is um in terms of getting the balance with realism and, and achievable, um, our municipal advisor recommended a three-to-five-year approach. So that is explicit in the policy and in your packet, it's on page thirty um under the general fund. And so our um, what it, what it says is that the general fund unassigned fund balance um should target two months in operating. So this is uh two-twelfths, obviously, of the general fund categories of personnel and material services, and that we want to hit this reserve target over the next three to five years. So that means on or prior to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget cycle. Um, and then it further states, once we've gotten on our target, that if in any given year, be after that, um, if the city proposes a budget that would put it below the target, it needs to include in the budget a plan for rebuilding it back. So those things are explicitly um in the policy associated with the general fund.
So sort of a, Mayor, go ahead. Look like you're gonna jump in.
Yeah, they, they were pretty clear. Five years was their strong recommendation. Um, but again, at least if we have a plan, if we do have to dip below, if there's something that comes up that causes us to uh, we, we're exposed to regenerate a plan that will get us back.
Right, so look five, six years out, come up with where we wanna be there, sort of work backwards with what's feasible to, to get us there, but it's really, we're looking at where we wanna be in s- five, six years or whatever.
And, and, and Zach, they were very specific to say that we have to, we really need to execute on the plan.
Yeah, for sure.
Going off of the plan, what happens is then it has the ability to bring our rating down, which none of us would want to do. And so being too aggressive could hurt us, but being very exacting and knowing that we can execute against the budget is a thing that is going to work well for us in the, the long run.
Sure, we can't divert a river in one fell swoop. It's gonna take a while to bend that. Um, would you be able to uh present figures that showed th- the, I, well, it's tough, this year's budget is so sort of um with COVID, but maybe like the, the previous years or, or this year's um intended budget prior, if we had passed this six years ago, or what would those, I don't know if that question makes sense, but what, what would our percentages be on now if we were adhering to this written rationale? Does that question make sense?
Um, I mean, I guess I could, yes, that could be done with numbers, but what would be missing is the services you don't have. The um, the staff you don't have, the, the police officers, the firefighters, the parks, the, the play. And though, who, we don't know what those decisions would have been, right? So it's, ah, anyways, that's, that's my initial thought in terms of the value, but.
Okay. Um, yeah, like I said, it's still soaking in, so the, um, that, those are the questions I have for now and, and could support them here.
Thank you, Zach. Now, go ahead.
Um, going to that two-twelfth methodology for the, the fund reserve, I mean, is that really just like going to sixteen and a half percent reserve or since we're only calculating off the personnel and the materials and services annual budget, is it if we're looking at like an actual number like we've been looking at, at twenty-five percent, where would that come in, just so we're comparing apples to apples?
Yeah, it's um, if I'm following your question, um, Counselor, correctly, that, that number is gonna float um depending on what the actuals are in any given year. And so um as the, the normal pace of things is for costs to increase, right? So year over year, the amount you would need to be holding in reserve is typically going to be increasing on a numeric basis, right? We, we, we are in actually kind of a weird year where because um because of COVID, we don't have some of the costs behind us, our actual reserve level to hit the um the two-twelfths would oddly maybe dip in a year like this. So I, I don't know if that um speaks to your question. Did I?
Uh, no, that, that answers it to some extent. I just I don't know, I, I just feel like two months of operating just, I know that that's what is recommended by government standards. It just seems like that puts us as a city leaner than what we've been in the past couple decades, and maybe Scott or Kelly could speak to that, but it just seems like it's less reserved than what we've had historically.
Oh, okay, yes. And you're right, that is less. And I think what um by adding in the component of looking at, well, what are our risks? Um, to me, looking at um the city of McMinnville, because the GFO recommendation is a national recommendation and our revenue risks are really um comparatively speaking across the nation, quite low. Um, we may have actually been holding too much in reserve and not investing that in capital improvements um or potentially, I, I would say probably capital improvements has been the miss, but um there may have also been service opportunities that um because we were very, very conservative, um, we we didn't uh deliver to, to the city. So.
And, and Jennifer, just so, and Kelly, feel free to jump in on this. That was our same discussion, uh, uh, Counselor Garvin. Uh, you know, we may have been holding on to too much, and where do we find ourselves today when we're looking at our facilities? We're looking at multimillion dollars uh that now we have to come up with um where we should be planning for some of these things. um where we should be planning for some of these things along the long way. Um, um, and uh and and so a- again, it's a philosophy that we need to change in our mind. But going back to Jennifer's discussion around the the lack of volatility in our revenue streams because of the uniqueness of Oregon and and being uh based on property values. You know, um, you know, we'll we'll need to talk a little bit, you know, is it two months? Is it two and a half months, three months? We have to feel comfortable with that. But at the same token, going back and looking at the realities of we tend to budget at a higher uh uh a lower revenue or a higher, uh no, a lower revenue and a higher expense. And then when it all comes out, we know that we're gonna be somewhere in between and we truly need to be more exacting in what we do. So that that's kind of our thoughts and Kelly and I and Peter had those discussions. Kelly, any other thoughts from that perspective?
Well, just to follow up on what you just said, uh, one of the first things I said is I want this to be much more realistic than it has been. I mean, we we're kind of floating there and saying, well, this is what we think we're getting in taxes is a three percent increase, but we usually get this much more and so we're assuming this much more and then we're gonna spend this much more. And I don't want to see that. I want to see something that's a little more uh transparent and stable. You know, that we're really looking at those expenditures and seeing if we can keep it in line with what's a realistic uh amount of revenue. I mean, if it really is gonna be this much more, then let's put it down. But if it's not, then I don't, you know, if it's highly questionable, I don't want to see it. Um, GFOA says seventeen percent is a a recommended ending fund balance, correct, Jennifer?
Yes, that's that's the recommended minimum and but it does further go on to say um taking into consideration this the specific um characteristics of the community in question. And so there um in some communities or some organizations, um, it may absolutely be um better to have a higher fund balance. Um, like, I mean, look at what's happening with um Washington and um California. The just the effect on municipal budgets of the um downturn in the business cycle is really hammering them in a way that just because our revenue source isn't based on any local income tax, for example, or sales tax, um, we're sheltered from that.
Yeah, but like you say, we're going to allow this to float, so to speak, uh, based on what our expenditures are, so. I overall, I I think it's, you know, in a way, it's a little less certain than what we're we've said in the past, but it also, I think, is much keeps everybody much more accountable. That is to say, uh, staff and planning and everything for these budgeted line items. So I personally think it's a better way to go.
But it is a mindset change that we need to become familiar with it and understand it. Sal, I see.
It really is important, we felt about three years ago, to kind of loosen things up because we had so much money that we were trying to maintain this twenty-five percent. And, you know, obviously, facilities and all sorts of things, you know, we needed police, we needed fire personnel. I mean, we just felt like we needed to spend some of it, but try and stay within some kind of reasonable limit.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. I I appreciate those comments, Kelly. I I guess my comment is that I feel that we know that we're gonna be facing a significant headwind uh in terms of of expenditures uh through twenty-thirty-five with PERS. And I don't think that employee uh benefits uh healthcare is gonna get better anytime soon. So we know these are significant drivers of cost and I guess I'm concerned about the idea of uh while I agree we should align the uh estimates with the actuals better than than has been done in the past, I'm a little nervous about um the talk of further reducing as a matter of policy or significantly reducing as a matter of policy, the overall uh actual reserve. Um, Adam's comment was that two months seems pretty low. I kind of tend to agree. I mean, we've said that we were holding on to too much money. Um, but when I look at the actuals, you see this consistent downward trend line. And, you know, unless we make uh course corrections in the budget to reduce those expenditures, presumably on the staff side, uh, that trend line's gonna continue. Uh, so I I think, you know, the time to, and I've kind of said this consistently, I think the time to take uh action is sooner rather than later. I think the sooner you take appropriate corrective action, the less the long-term outcome is, so less bad the long-term outcome is, so. So I I guess I would preach caution in in lowering that strategic reserve too far.
Well, and and I agree. I want to see it going up and I want to see it going up consistently, so. Um, you know, and within a a time period. Um, I I don't disagree with you, Sal. I want to see it going up. It's got to.
But remembering that we have a new basis of the possibility of looking at a target that's more of a floating target based off of two, maybe three months worth of expenditures as compared to a hard number possibly of whether it be fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen percent. Uh, let's let's move over to Remy. Remy, if uh you've not had an opportunity to weigh in.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would replicate a a lot of what I've heard tonight. Um, uh, there I I like some of the changes that were highlighted um in the presentation. Um, and generally, I I have to say, I do agree with the a change in direction. And and again, I don't want to be redundant, so uh but but in looking in in retrospect of the things that weren't accomplished, that were sacrificed in order to maintain maintain a higher reserve, um, I think have created difficulties, not just uh for the the budget and the council, but for the community as a whole and um into individual departments. And so I think we want to be thoughtful about how we move forward and uh and I I I tend to support this more conservative approach to to getting our um getting our city in line with our budget um and uh with our actual budget. And and so I'm um I'm, you know, not, I'm not happy to see our reserves going down um or the thought of intentionally lessening them, but I do think that this is an important an important step in in being able to move forward. That's really all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Remy. Uh, we've got two uh Budget Committee members on, a a long-term member, Mr. Jerry Hart. Jerry, would you like to weigh in?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, Jennifer, a couple of questions and comments. The two-twelve uh formula, does that apply to all funds? Uh, you know, uh, you mentioned the general fund, but uh does that same principle apply to all?
Um, no, so I didn't get into details on the other funds, but there are um, there are two um, there are two special revenue funds that are have similar characteristics to general fund that would also have um this recommended two-twelves. And that's the street fund and the building fund. And the reason why is these are ongoing concerns that have staff associated with them. So it makes sense also for them to have this kind of minimum target. Um, in addition, the enterprise funds, um, we would want to have that. But our wastewater service, you know, has no problem meeting meeting this um objective, so. But that fund also would want to have a two-month minimum for operate operations.
Okay, that makes sense. And I would uh agree, I think there's been deferred maintenance uh that is costing that that was done to keep that twenty-five percent that may end up costing the city more. So I think those kind of, you know, as well, you know, penny saved is a, what is it? Pounds, penny saved is a pound, whatever that is, so. Um, we've had gr- we've had grandkids here all week, uh, and so my brain is fried, so anyway. Uh, I'll hey, one one final question, Jennifer. The uh Capital Reserve Fund, um, that I I forget right now, is that a separate fund for uh for this for the city?
Um, well, we have um, we have a series of, they're categorized as, I guess, special revenue funds that could be um characterized as um capital reserve. There's the Park Development Fund, that's almost exclusively um capital investments. The Transportation Fund as well. Um, but that's that's in a group of, there's a group of special revenue funds that we want to call out having a, their requirement reserves should be variable and it should be based on what the capital plan or what the programmatic plan is for each of those funds. So we'll want to, and in the budget process, my sense from reading the document um this last year and participating is that staff do speak to these elements in the narrative portion, but we'll want to make sure that we're calling this stuff out um for each fund as it uh relates to where they fall in the policy.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was getting to. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thanks for your insight into that, Jerry. Uh, Allison, we'll call on you and see if you uh I this is a probably a new discussion for you, but any thoughts or questions that you might have?
Um, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to join you. I thought the presentation was extremely clear and transparent and that was lovely as the new citizens understand that. Uh, I tend to err on the side of um agreeing with the new mindset uh about the the um what I what I want to say is I think that if you i- if you ignore capital improvements or I think as Counselor Drapkin said, you know, sacrifice capital improvements, um, it they can become more expensive in the end. So the fact that this new mindset might free up some money, if I understood it correctly, to turn towards capital improvements, I think would be a great idea. I also um like the fact that you're going to drop that uh low stat fund out. I think that's sort of morally very ethical. Um, and uh, you know, and I thought that we have no intention of taking money away from policy and fireplaces and just the new person, that seemed like a a good decision. I think that's about all I have to say. I think I found this fascinating conversation.
Allison, thank you for your input. Um, so now what I'm going to do is just go back to Jennifer and uh, you know, you made a presentation. Uh, I you're you're trying to get a sense of where you would want the council to have you go. Uh, do you have that sense? And do we need to get back as a audit committee and bring that back together? Do we need another work session? Uh, what are your thoughts at this point, Jennifer, for you and staff to move forward?
Well, I guess um maybe maybe I will defer to to Jeff more in terms of I I'm still getting to know all you and so I'm not sure what the best process would be to move forward. Because I do, I do think it's important for us to get this policy updated and in place. And it should be something clearly that all the counselors um are comfortable with. Um, I feel like there probably is a little bit more work to do, but I don't know what the best path is for achieving that.
So Jeff, we'll call on you in that you are so critically involved with Jennifer in that process.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm to the council. Uh, thanks, Jennifer. Really um strong presentation. I would suggest that we um take the comments that we've heard tonight. I think we need to refine a little bit the why behind best practices and uh recognize that this is a far more rigorous and formal and comprehensive policy than the city has had in the past. It will influence the way we build our budgets. And um one of the key components is if for some reason we present a budget that doesn't meet any of our reserve targets, we'll have to have a policy-level discussion about our plan to get to that level. And 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 those are um new aspects to our budgeting process that we haven't um done in the past and weren't required by previous policies. I heard some concerns about whether or not the um GFOA or the 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 best practice of two months for operating funds was was enough, and we can do some more research on that and provide you some more information on that. Uh, but my sense is that we probably want to bring this back to the council um as um as a document that is ready to adopt. If you're comfortable with it, if you need to make some additional changes, you'll do that. But it it feels like it's probably ready for an action as opposed to sending it back to the Audit Committee or scheduling another work session. That's my sense. And I and I think I I I think we would expect some additional discussion by the council at that next meeting, but uh probably not worthy of a full work session. That's my sense.
Thank you, Jeff. And 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 the the one thought that I might have is because we've had the discussion around whether the seventeen minimum is what is 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 kind of what we've been looking at as a complete uh percentage, what would it look like if we had a two-month floating reserve compared to a three-month floating reserve and compare that to like a minimum requirement of seventeen? I think that might be able to give you a look on both sides and then you can take the old and the new and get a sense. Because I don't know that we could say today where we're at, what does that relate to in a two to a three-month floating average? Um, is that a fair statement, Jennifer?
Um, sure, I absolutely can um run numbers and show you all what that looks like. And then um actually, so it it sounds like from a just a a a purely pragmatic point of view, um, I could show you what that looks like and then we fill in the blank in the policy so that you're able to actually take action? Is is that kind of what I'm hearing, how this could progress most efficiently?
I I I think from my perspective, it just gives us, it gives us the old and the new and you can get a real sense and then we can then move forward to that floating average of uh of expenditures. Kelly, I see you taking your mic off. What what's your read on that?
Well, just a quick uh divisions, three over two is gonna gonna give us twenty-six percent, I think. So I'm not entirely sure that, but.
That's gonna be helpful, right?
No, I, in all honesty, uh, you know, we assess the property taxes, what, in the in the end of July, right? Or around that time. And so money does start coming in fairly rapidly after that.
Oh, in October, well.
Well, it comes in by October, yeah.
Well, the the assessor gives us the number in October and they start rolling in the end of October and November.
Okay, so August, September, October is three months, but theoretically, you should have some money left over at the end of the year, too. So I don't know, I mean, that twenty-five percent is wonderful, but.
Yeah, and you're right. It's an easy math question, but it's also looking at the pure dollar amounts. I think sometimes when you're looking at the budget helps in that process. You know, uh, two-twelves is seventeen percent, three-twelves is twenty-five percent. So it's somewhere where we've kind of been, uh, but I think pure dollars might even give us some more insights.
Okay, I can apply those numbers, for example, to the twenty-twenty-one budget and show you how how much money we would need to take out of programming to drop into reserve. Could maybe that would be a way to to show a potential.
Have some serious uh, that would help people really understand what it means. Yeah.
And 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 the bottom line implication. Go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, will you say that again, Jennifer? What what did you say?
Um, I could take the twenty, the the current budget for twenty-twenty-one and tell, say what the amount, the difference between what we put in reserve in the budget and if we had the um two-month versus the twenty-five percent, how many dollars that would have been in this budget year? So that you'd get a sense, is it a hundred thousand dollars or is it a million dollars or?
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Garvin has his hand raised and so does Counselor Drapkin.
Okay, let's go with Adam first and then Remy second. Adam?
I just wanted to say that I, I do appreciate kind of what you presented, Scott, is kind of looking at the, the difference between them. I, I get that the three months is kind of a pretty big number. I'm not quite sure. I want to be all the way up there. It, it just, until I can actually see the two months converted into what it would actually look like in our budget, whether it's, you know, the budget we just got out of, which typically your twenties, so those are all actual numbers, or if you use twenty-one, which is still, you know, to be determined how it's gonna play out with the pandemic and everything else going on. Um, I'm finding using either one of those budgets, but before I voted on an actual policy, I would just like to see some comparables.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Remy.
Uh, I was just gonna refer back and, and ask the, the, um, the, the two twelfths, the, that was a recommendation, what was the source of the recommendation in, in moving in that direction?
Um, the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA.
GFOA, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I have to say that I am comfortable with that direction at this time, and, um, and I'll restate that I'm, mostly that's coming from a, a place of really seeing the effects of attempting, or not attempting, but maintaining this larger reserve for a long time, and what's that meant for hiring with our police department? Um, what that has meant in terms especially of deferred maintenance, uh, maintenance in our various buildings? Um, uh, and some key buildings jump to mind, of course, the, the fire department, the swimming pool, um, the community center. I mean, we, we definitely understand the, the tremendous amount of expense that faces the city in terms of, of those repairs. And I know that you can't, uh, uh, look into a crystal ball and see how it could have been different with, um, uh, that, that difference, or exactly what councils would have done in the past with, um, those differences in the budget. But, um, I feel like where we are today with the amount of work that needs to be done, and in addition to that, uh, the recession that we find ourselves in and, and that we have really, uh, little understanding of how long the impacts of this will last, um, and how it will affect our budget going forward, that, again, being more, uh, conservative with the budget at this time is the right, is the right policy direction to set for the city.
Thank you, Remy. Uh, Zach, you have your hand up.
Yeah, uh, well said, Remy. Um, Mr. Mayor, back on the subject of sort of the path this will take to ratification, are you seeing this as something that we'll want to do a public hearing for? I thought I read that question in the staff report or, or not, but what are your thoughts on that?
Well, um, I, I, I'll just throw out is that, you know, we, we do have tremendous input when we bring the full budget committee together. I, I mean, we've got a lot of public input coming in from that group if they were here and were to weigh in. And these are individuals that have studied and understand that. Um, I, I would be open for, uh, uh, for maybe more public input, but this is one committee that is the largest committee that we have with, uh, citizens a part of our budget committee. So I would, uh, open that up for discussion, but understanding, you know, we have equal citizens as we have counsel on this committee. Any other thoughts?
I, I personally see this as a policy matter and probably what we should be deciding, along with the help of the budget committee, which is, as Scott said, you know, equal in size to us.
Any other thoughts is, uh, from council?
Well, the, the one thought that I have is that we've talked about, um, reducing the reserve, and we've talked about, um, making investments to, uh, address capital improvements which are needed, and I agree with that. I guess the one thing we haven't discussed is whether or not the intent is to main, try and maintain the current service level in every department. Um, or whether we're gonna be trying to seek all of these capital improvement costs, uh, solely through reductions in the, uh, reserve. And, uh, I just, I guess I feel like, you know, we should be thinking about both of those, um, options in this, in this, uh, budget environment.
I, I, I would agree, but at the same token, understanding that I think we need to come away with a reserve policy and work towards that irregardless of, of where we sit within departments and where we sit with pending opportunities. That's a part of our budgeting and how long it's going to take us to get there. And again, if you remember, this is a three to five-year process, uh, that if we come up with a reserve, then we, we by policy then have staff work towards that by a certain date. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. That's very well, uh, said, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, you know, we have another discussion this evening. Uh, Jennifer, I think what I'm hearing is there's a leaning towards the, possibly the two, uh, twelfths, but I think with a little tweaking on your part, you could give us a fill-in-the-blank if it may be something that we're looking at two and a half, twelve, uh, to, to twelve or something like that. Gives us a parameter when we're looking at total dollars. I think that would help solidify every counselor's feel. And then as we do this, I would really like to, um, bring budget members back to this discussion when we do this. Uh, because I think in the, uh, in talking about transparency, we hear a lot about that. But like I say, this is a committee that is equally, uh, it is equal to members on, on council and members that are from the committee. And this is probably one of the more difficult discussions that we have. It's technical, and you need to have understood the budget process, because you could get, you could get caught up in what ifs and what wheres of people not even knowing what we're trying to accomplish. So I would, I would say, uh, that I would like to see a more concerted effort to bring that budget committee in. And I so much thank Jerry and Allison being here this evening. Kelly?
Uh, I'm, I'm asking Jeff. There were two objects here, and one of them had to do with your desire to prioritize service levels. And I think that's what the guys are getting at, is how this will be distributed, is service level prioritization, correct?
So that's, that's a, a different process that we'll be going through and bringing to the council, uh, later this year. It certainly informs how we're going to build a budget. Um, the, the size of the budget and the floor as we're building the budget is also, is not just informed by our wants and our needs, but also by this reserve policy. So they work together to help us build future budgets.
So I guess I come to Jennifer. Uh, do you have a clear direction, uh, of where we need to go? And do you feel that you and your staff can bring back to us, uh, what we need so that we can build the proper, uh, reserve policy moving forward? And then have some real teeth of measurability to where we need to go so that we can make sure that our bond ratings would remain intact? Because we quite possibly, somewhere in the future, are going to be looking at, uh, having to ra, raise revenue to be able to, to hit some of those, uh, facility needs that we have out there.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're, we're good to go. Um, and so I'll get this on, um, hopefully, uh, a couple of agendas from now, um, before you guys again. So it won't take long.
Yes. Well, again, Jennifer, again, to you and staff, um, these are, these are long, difficult discussions sometimes when we're talking about budgeting and, uh, the tax dollars. But I think with your expertise and being able to get us right and peel the onion down to where we need to go, I, I applaud you and the staff, so thank you.
Well, thank you all. Um, sorry it went on so long. I know numbers are no one's favorite, but, um, but you ate your vegetables tonight, people. Very nice.
And we, and, and you brought the music to the start of the meeting, too. We, we got a full meal deal, didn't we? Okay, with that, um, uh, thank you, uh, council and members of the budget committee. We're now going to move into a discussion on the Urban Growth Boundary, the UGB, uh, remand response update. Uh, we've put quite a little time and effort into this. I'll tell you, Heather and her staff have put more time into that than us. But I, I see that Heather's on the line, Tom's on the line, Jamie's on the line. Uh, I think, uh, DJ's on the line. So, uh, Heather, thank you for your patience, and we'll turn, uh, the remainder of our discussion over to you. I saw that you'd sent out a presentation, but it looked like it went back. So, uh, I, I don't know that we have those to follow that came out through an email earlier tonight.
Uh, yeah, so good evening, Mayor and councilors. Um, uh, it, it should have, it should have stayed with you, the presentation, but I will be honest, my, um, outlook has been squirrely over the last couple of days, so it could have recalled it. I don't know. We didn't do that intentionally. Uh, but we will share our screen. So, um, tonight's actually a big night for us. This is a night where we start actually looking at maps and land and have discussion about what an expansion could look like. Uh, we want to walk you through that. I am going to give you a heads up. We anticipate this will be about an hour, an hour and a half discussion. I know you're already an hour and a half in. So, um, feel free to ask questions as we go if you need to, so that we can keep our energy levels up for everyone. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, and DJ and I are going to pinch-hit this like we've done in the past. Okay, I'm just getting it all set up so I can see what I'm doing. Um, so we are, um, live actually with our website now, Growing McMinnfield Mindfully. As you're gonna see, I start all the presentations with the same first couple of slides. That just sort of puts the record out there in terms of what we're doing. We won't go through that tonight, because we've talked about that a lot. Um, so, uh, we are responding to a remand from the Oregon Court of Appeals for our growth planning process, which said that we had one assignment of error, and that the city erred in its application of what we call Oregon Revised Statute 197.298, and that a correct application of the law could compel a different result. So tonight is a discussion about how we are applying that. Um, the court gave us direction on how to move forward, which was determine the land needed, refine your study area, identify billable land in the study area, which is part of applying ORS 197.298. Then apply ORS 197.298 to land selection for locational analysis and evaluate that land for goal fourteen location factors. So we've done the first three steps thus far with you, um, and tonight we're talking about the last two steps. Um, we are gonna go through land expansion maps. We have three alternatives to show, to share with you tonight. Um, we're gonna walk you through the priority land selection, um, associated with that and the goal fourteen factors analysis for that. And we are at a point where we need to decide on one scenario. Um, we do want to bring this in a joint work session to you, a city council and the Board of County Commissioners sometime in mid-October with one map and talking through what that map looks like and why we're there. Um, tonight, we've provided a presentation that's fairly high-level, so we're not going into all the legal findings, and we're looking for you to provide some direction to us. The direction could be one of two things that we, that we're thinking of, or there could be other means of getting there. One would be give us your feedback and have staff come back with a, a recommendation of the one map. Um, or to, um, schedule a longer work session sometime in the next two weeks to, and we would think it would be about two to three hours to really dive deep into these map, maps and land analysis and really talk them through till we get to a point where, where there is comfort level with one map that's selected. But we are looking to get to one map by the end of September, so we can start putting our findings, documents together for you to bring to you in mid-October. So you've seen this before, but this is the calculation of need. So, uh, as we talk about the maps, we need to understand the need that we're looking for. Um, this is what we talked about at your last meeting, was that we're now looking for one thousand one hundred and, we need to place one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine new dwelling units on land outside our existing UGB. Um, and we have gone through a series of, um, we already have a phase one, what I call phase one expansion associated with this plan that brought some acreage in, and we are now in the phase two discussion. So our summary of need now is one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine housing uses. And the reason we don't put that into acres is because, um, as we talked about at the last work session, the amount of housing that we can get on a piece of land differs based on what that land looks like, um, in terms of its developability. Um, and then also, um, sustainability is the sustained density. So we had some discussion about hazard lands at the last work session and things of that nature. So depending on the, the land that we're looking at to bring into the city through a, this UGB process, you, it could be more or less land based on how suitable that land is for development. So we don't put a number behind that until we actually come up with a map. Um, but tonight, when we walk through the study areas, we have a model where we have, um, gone through each study area and really pinpointed how much housing we feel we, that can be built in the different study areas. Tom Shower has done an excellent job putting all this together. And so based on that, um, we've been able to put some alternatives together that show to you how we can achieve this many housing units with different, with different amounts of land throughout the study area. We are also looking for fifty-four acres for public schools, two hundred and fifty-four acres for public parks, a little over forty-seven for religious, um, activities. We have this other category, which is sort of the catch-all of smaller uses, so that's where you have some government needs in there and infrastructure. We have a need for a hundred and six acres for commercial development, and then we have a surplus of forty-six acres of industrial land within the existing UGB. So, um, oh, I just described the capacity piece for housing. We are looking for an overall plan goal of five-point-seven units per acre. And the capacity areas do change, the capacity for the different areas do change. And some of our, um, reasoning for why it changes is steep slopes, because on steep slopes, we could, we are only able to get lower units per acre. So you'll see in our analysis, we have a threshold of zero to ten percent where we have assigned a higher level of density than we have for slopes where we have ten to twenty-five percent in our study areas. Uh, we came to you at your last work session, and we said, here is our study area. We need to start identifying if there's land within the study area that's not considered buildable per ORS 197.298. So there's three steps in that statute, and one is determining what land is not buildable within your study area. And we went through that process, and at the end of the work session, the direction we were given was to remove one hundred and seventy-four acres in what we called West Hills One Study Area due to the steep slopes. So most of that area was over twenty-five percent of steep slopes. And seventy acres out of the Grand Haven area due to the Shagwin Farms Conservation Easement. So our final study, study area that we have now that we're using for our priority selection and goal fourteen factors is the map you see in front of you. We've colored this map based on the priority selection process. So the property that's in green is what we call exception areas. That's the property we need to look at first. The property that's in sort of the darker forest green is already in the city, that's already in the UGB. It's not in the city. We wish it was in developing, but it's not. Um, so that's the phase one exception areas that came in in two thousand and three. We do have some exception areas still left in the study area that we're looking at, and we need to look at those first. Yellow is the resource lands that are lower quality, and then red are resource lands that are higher quality, meaning that they're a lower priority for selection, and we want them to remain as farmland, if they can remain as farmland and, um, the city can still meet its need. And there's a whole, uh, process for how we work through how we meet our need, and that's what we're gonna talk about tonight as well. So the alternatives analysis, um, the alternative, it's a, it's three scenarios that we put together for how we can look at a UGB expansion, and we're doing, we have to do it within this two thousand and three planning and... And we're doing, we have to do it within this 2003 planning and legal framework. So to remind everyone, what that means is we have to meet the principles and objectives of the plan. So the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan that was adopted in 2003. Achieve the stated need for McMinnville's future that's in that plan. So that's based on the housing needs analysis and economic opportunity analysis that was done through that effort. Look at the priority structure of this statute as directed by the court. And then look at what we call Goal 14 Factors. So that's the, one of the Oregon Land Use Goals that is, has been put together to talk about urbanization. So how do cities expand to accommodate growth moving into the future? How did they expand into rural areas and the decision-making process relative to that? To remind everyone of the principles of the plan, because we don't actually talk about this very often, but the principles are to contain urban expansion within natural and physical boundaries. So we use that as one of our principles to describe buildable land. To encourage development consistent with smart growth principles. To allow increased density to help meet housing needs. Minimize public facilities cost. To avoid identified hazards and natural resources. To respect historic development patterns and land uses and to comply with state land use laws. So we will be using all these principles as we work through our findings for our final recommendation. We also decided to look at concepts relative to these study areas. And so we divided the study area up into these different regions. As we started talking about what does that smart planning look like? And how do we achieve some of those principles for the, for the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan? So the second big piece of this work outside of the priority soils selection process is how do you apply those Goal 14 Factors? And this is all, the factors are written into the goal and are part of Oregon Administrative Rules. And DJ is going to go through the methodology that's been established, what the factors are and the methodology that we've established to do a quantitative analysis for it that's transparent across all the study areas and helps the city identify the need.
Thanks, Heather. So first of all, I wanted to just familiarize you with Goal 14. It's the Urbanization Goal. It's one of the statewide land use planning goals. It primarily works with the other urban goals, housing, economic development, et cetera. And it is the goal that established for all cities in Oregon, the need to adopt urban growth boundaries. And Goal 14 deals a lot with how you do that. In the old days, it was, it was the whole ball of wax. It's been amended significantly by both statute and rule. So that, so that the process is clearer in some ways, but there's still some, some vagaries in there. The factors themselves, there are seven factors under Goal 14 related to how urban growth boundaries are determined. Factors one and two relate to need and Heather's kind of reviewed that. We're done with that process. McMinnville's got an acknowledged Housing and Economic Opportunity Analysis that established what its need is. So the other factors, Factors Three Through Seven are the location factors. And they're used to decide where to expand the boundary. Factors one and two is how big does it need to be? Factors Three Through Seven is where does it go? The, here are the, the factors taken directly from the goal. And if just pick one and read one, it's pretty obtuse. They are not straightforward and easy to understand. There's, there's some vagaries there and open to some interpretation as to what they might mean. And particularly because these apply to every jurisdiction across the state. You use them in Portland and you use them in SIO and you use them in McMinnville. So we've, so there's, there's a lot of interpretation that we've done to try and develop some criteria that we could use in conjunction with these factors to hone in on things in McMinnville that makes sense. So let's start with Factor Three, Public Facilities. We've developed two criteria that will look at all of the, all of the expansion areas, the study areas, and compare them for their cost to extend water, sewer and transportation services outside the urban growth boundary. And also what's the cost to expand capacity inside the urban growth boundary? If there isn't sufficient supply or capacity to absorb the water demand or the sewer demand that comes from the expansion areas. So that's, those two screening criteria will be used to evaluate all the study areas for public facilities. Then we've established, the next factor is Factor Four. Maximum Efficiency of Land Uses Within and on the Fringe of the Existing Urban Area.
Mr. Mayor, may I jump in here? Mr. Hefferman, do you mind if I go back to the last?
Not at all. Go ahead, Remy.
Wonderful, thank you. So on this, you said that you were going to some comparative analysis. And I'm wondering if there's an easy strike through on any of this information in terms of if we needed to, you know, put in an additional pump stations, for instance. That, sorry. Sorry, my dog doesn't like it when I'm on my computer and I try not to crate him. If there's some kind of, you know, without digging deep, do we know that it's more expensive to put in additional pump stations than to run lines? If we're not also dealing with elevation gains? And I'm wondering, since the, since the line is drawn all around the city of McMinnville and there's really only elevation gains in some directions, I'm wondering if you can address that as possibly easier to eliminate areas?
So that, it's a great question. I'll give you some background here. One of the things that was done when the plan was first put together, the last go-round and it was remanded back to the city was because we used this factor, the city did, to exclude the West Hills on the basis that it was too expensive to build water service there. And the court said, you did, you made that finding in the wrong order. You did it too soon. You didn't make certain engineering findings that said it wasn't feasible or possible to build water infrastructure to serve those areas for residential uses. So you can't do that. And the second thing was, besides it being out of sequence, that you didn't apply the same methodology to every place. So you developed data for the West Hills and the cost of water expansion there, but you didn't develop data in the cost to expand water service in Grand Haven, in Three Mile Lane. And so we got, we are, were asked to go back and to take a look at everybody, every place and to do it consistently. So there's two steps to it. One is to determine whether or not any of the candidates' areas can't be served with water and sewer because of a barrier, topographic or physical barrier. And then secondly, what are the relative costs? And what I'm, we're going to focus mostly on tonight, because we've already established the physical barriers, is what are the relative cost differences between different areas? Because they're significant. And in the West Hills, for example, it may be that there are certain types of housing that you could build there and could be served, but other types of housing and other types of development, you couldn't. So it's, we're doing both a relative comparison inside and outside the UGB for what the impact of expansion would be. And some areas are significantly more expensive. Unfortunately, tonight I can't present those findings to you. I'm expecting them this week. And you'll see that we haven't finished doing this analysis yet. But we know from the past and just from early conversations with the engineers that are working on this, that it, that there are significant challenges to servicing, not, not only extending water service, but also sewer service in different areas.
Yeah, and so Counselor Drapkin, we hired a third-party vendor to do that work for us. So, so that it would be neutral and transparent and applied across the whole study area based on the petitioner's challenge to the court, the court's remand back down to us. The other part of the remand was that the city can't rely on just one factor of Goal 14 to eliminate property. It's, it's really a, you, you as a City Council can decide how you want to apply the factors as a whole, but it is sort of a congregate decision-making process.
Yeah, and thank you for mentioning that, Heather. These are, these factors are to be applied in a, as a group. And you, as the legislative decision body, need to balance them. You need to weigh and balance the net effect of expansion against all of these factors and arrive at a decision on that basis.
So we, we put together a fairly layered and nuanced table to go through all the factors and subsets underneath the factors. Had each team member pick, work on different factors across all study areas so that there was consistency. And we scored them. And, and then they will bring to you what the final score is for all those different study areas based on that work. We, we're still waiting on the service piece of it, but we feel fairly comfortable on the higher trends that we've heard through that, that we can bring to you alternative maps tonight for discussion. But we have come up with a methodology and we'll share that sample with you here as part of the presentation as to how to, how to bring all these factors together to make an overall comprehensive decision.
So going on to Factor Four again. This one is, that, that is particularly scratch your head land as far as what that means. So we, but, but basically what it boils down to is how well does an area, a study area that you're thinking about expanding into, integrate with the existing city and into the existing urban environment? So urban integration, but then also factors like how, how expensive it is to develop in one area relative to the need that you have. Suitability for bike, pet and transit, because that's a big part of the smart growth ideas that are, are part of the comprehensive plan. And suitability in an area for parks and schools. So though, all of those criteria were evaluated under Factor Four. Factor Five is Environment, Energy, Economic and Social Consequences. How would urban expansion affect the environment? What are its energy implications, economic and social consequences? And the screening criteria that we developed for this include critical wildlife that's not supposed to be hazard, that's supposed to be habitat, natural hazards, also wildfire hazards, which we have a new map for that we'll show you in a bit. Affordable housing, suitability and neighborhood and commercial suitability. Those two affect the social consequences and economic consequences under Factor Five. Under Factor Six, oh wait, first, so just to give you an example of what the map looked like and what some of the data resources that we are. This is a map from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. This shows Oregon Critical Wildlife Habitat for Species of Concern. We use three species of concern here as kind of proxies for area, the areas around McMinnville. The Western Bluebird, the White-Breasted Nut-Hatch and the Olive-Sighted Flycatcher. They tend to inhabit riparian areas, but also oak savanna and woodland areas. And so this is, what's shown on the map here is seasonal occupation of these habitat areas by these three species of concern around McMinnville. There's also another threatened species of concern that is in the, in, in McMinnville. That's the Western Pond Turtle. There's existing habitat for Western Pond Turtle in Fox Ridge Road, as well as inside the city in the, in the golf course and also over by the steel mill. But there are species of concern that's got habitat that is, is threatened. The species actually, its survival is threatened. So this was, this is a natural resource habitat for wildlife. The next map shows hazard areas for geologic and flood risk. The area in purple down towards the bottom that's kind of got that big curving arc, that is an area that is particularly susceptible to liquefaction risk in a big earthquake. If there were structures sitting on the ground there, they're probably going to sink into the earth, which is what happens under a liquefaction event. The areas in kind of the pink-red, not the deep red, but the pink or red, are subject to, are, have high susceptibility for landslides. And you can see that it's, there are pretty significant areas over on the west side inside the urban growth boundary that are subject to that risk, as well as some of the areas in the, some areas in the study areas themselves. And then the next slide is going to show wildfire risk. Oh no, I didn't get that. Oh shoot, that didn't get saved and that's unfortunate. I may be able to, after we get done with this, if anybody's interested, I can show, share that map. What's interesting about that is that most of the high-risk areas are beyond a mile. And not, not too many of the study areas are affected by them. But there are some risk areas adjacent to the urban growth boundary on the west side that are at moderate to high risk for wildfire hazard. And then Factor Six is Soil Classification. This mirrors statute in 197 to 98. Class One is Class One soils. They are the highest priority for not including in the urban growth boundary. Class Four and above are the, are the lowest priority for keeping out of the urban growth boundary. And the next slide is a map that shows you those locations. Red are soil class one. Yellow is, or kind of the orangish is soil class two. Class Three is yellow and Class Four and above is green. So the green areas would be from a priority standpoint, the go places. The red areas would be the off-limits areas as far as this factor is concerned. And so that, that is one of the criteria that we used in trying to develop alternatives is this soil classification. Next is Factor Seven, Agricultural Compatibility. We have two screening criteria for this. One is the presence of high-value farmland within a study area. And the second is a high-value farmland around the perimeter of the study area. If you urbanize an area, you're going to, any high-value farmland in the area is going to be directly impacted and likely to go away over time as it's displaced by urban uses. But the perimeter around the study area is also going to be impacted as urban development approaches towards the edge. So we use these two screening criteria to evaluate those agricultural impacts. We were criticized for not doing a good enough job of this in the, in the previous round. This map shows Class One and Two soils, again, the red and the orange. It also shows the soils that are categorized, that are classified as high-value farmland under ORS 215.710. And as you can see, the urban growth boundary is pretty much surrounded by high-value farmland everywhere. The high-value farmland that's in the West Hills, the green, are soils that are particular, that are protect, are considered high-value because of their suitability for, for agricultural production.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, so what ORS 215.710 says is Class One and Class Two soils are high-value farmland by default. And then it says, in the subclasses of Class Three and Four in the Willamette Valley, these soils, Carlton, Shaheen, and those types of soils. of soil classes are also high-value farmland.
The other category that we included in here as high-value resource land was any pardon me, any land in study areas that was zoned for timber timber production. So you can see on this slide, there's a hashed area out on the west side that extends into West Hills two, and most of it's in West Hills one, but also in West Hills two, as well as some of the land north of Fox Ridge Road. Those those areas are zoned and regulated under county statute for commercial timber operation. So those are the seven criteria. This again also shows the high-value farmland around the perimeters. And and then it also shows you in green, the remaining lands that are not high-value farmland that are on the perimeter. And as you can see, there's some little pockets of green on the west side that are not high-value farmland and are proximate to the UGB. So those kind of, not to carry the metaphor too far, but they have green lights on them.
Yeah, green land. And then these lands here, we see larger amounts of it. This is already in the UGB, so this is part of the phase one submittal that came into the UGB already. So these pieces, we'll amend this map and change it so these pieces are no longer part of the study. But but it so it shows that up here where we have a lot of class three and class four soils per soil classification, we also have a lot of high-value farmland per ORS 215.
So just to give you a sense of how we're rating these things, we're at an interim step here. We've done the exception areas. We've done some of the resource areas, but I wanted to let you see what this looked like. These are the exception areas. It includes the exception areas that are now inside the urban growth boundary. We included them here just because they're important, because under the remand effort, they are contributing to meeting the housing need that's 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 in the comprehensive plan and and that's part of the need analysis. And so we wanted to also evaluate them for all of these other characteristics so that we would continue to evaluate all of the land that is part of the solution here for meeting the identified land needs that we have. Those areas are meeting that need. They're primarily, if you can see across the top, the net density in those areas, they are primarily addressing the city's land needs for low-density housing, for single-family on relatively large lots. So three and a half units per acre is the equivalent density that the city has in its R1 zone. 4.3 is the equivalent density that in the city's R2 zone. So there's a pretty significant amount of capacity that these exception areas that are included in the urban growth boundary provide. And then Lawson Lane and Old Sheridan Road and Hidden Hills, the three that are candidates for inclusion, are are also meeting that same type of need. The reason that they're only meeting this level of density is because of how chopped up and parceledized they are. There are a lot of properties in these areas that are mo- every a lot of things are less than two, and there are some that are less than two and a half, quite a few between two and a half and five. But it's very difficult on parcels that size to get six units to the acre when you've already got half of it that's developed.
When we start looking at the alternatives, our housing needs analysis describes how much acreage we need in our for how much acreage we need to be R1, R2, R3, and R4 to serve future housing needs that in this UGB expansion. So these pieces that have already come in are absorbing predominantly the need that's already identified for R1 and R2 zoning.
The other thing I wanted to point out on the chart is how many of these areas have under the different categories on the left side, the different criteria, commercial suitability, housing suitability. Housing suitability means you would get a three if the study area were capable of developing any identified housing need. And you can see that these areas are a lot of ones because the only housing need that they can deliver is low-density, single-family. And 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 so when you look across them, housing suitability, they're rated low. Development cost, hmm, it's a mixed bag. They're not too bad. Fox Ridge Road is expensive because of landslide hazards and other steep slopes and things like that. But this is where where I was saying, you can't just add these things up and get a score. They have to be balanced, one against the other, depending on what your land needs are. You'll notice also under parks and schools, the exception areas don't do very well. Again, that's because they're so chopped up. There aren't big sites that are that would make good neighborhood parks and good school sites. So that's that's this table, and we're going to do we're doing something similar for for the resource lands. So first, next thing we're going to talk about is how we would apply the Goal 14 factors to priority lands. And we're just going to talk a little bit about the different Goal 14 factors and how they relate to the priority lands. Those would be lands that are low-soil class and exception lands that would be highest priority for bringing into the urban growth boundary.
Yeah, so our so to get back to the ORS 197, it does have a prioritization scheme in it. This is where we're at now in this process. We're we're working through number one of that ORS. And we shared it with you before. So the first place to look is urban reserves. We do not have that. The second place to look is exception land or farm and forest land surrounded by exception land. The third place to look is marginal lands designed pursuant to ORS 197. We don't have that in McMinnville in our study area. And the last place to look is farm and forest land. And then the farm and forest land is is sequenced as well based on the soil classifications that DJ went through with you. Higher priority shall be given to land of that what we call lower lower capabilities. That's the lower capability for production in terms of farmland, and that's the soil classification. So higher priority is given to the higher numbers of soil classifications. And in McMinnville, that would be we have some class four, some class three, and then most of the land is class two and some class one. And then the third portion of ORS 197 is this sort of buildable land category. And this is where the court decision is interesting. DJ and I spent a lot of time talking about this today to make sure we were following this correctly. But essentially, what this says is you can say that some land is not buildable based on these two tests. And we've already gone through that with you. That was the last work session, the test being it doesn't meet the land need at all. And then also that future urban services cannot be provided due to topographical or other physical constraints. So we went through that, and we eliminated those two pieces, the conservation easement and West Hills one. And then the third part of this portion number three comes into play as we're working through the alternative analysis. And what it says is, if you if to bring in a lower priority land, so bringing in a, you know, class three land, which which we have an example of, if you're going to bring in some property that's class three to satisfy that selection process, but the only way you can get to it is through higher priority lands, then you are allowed to do that through this with this test. Because the goal is to, you know, to try and get as much of the higher priority lands as possible.
So that just to just to follow up on that, the ones in the 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 lands that didn't meet the test under one and two of that were deemed not buildable, and they were removed.
Yeah, yeah.
And there are still some lands inside the study areas that are unconsidered unbuiltable because they have slopes greater than 25%, but they're scattered. They're not they're not there isn't an escarpment somewhere that would have allowed us to exclude an area beyond that boundary. But we've largely used those two criteria to those two parts of the statute to determine what's buildable by first defining what's unbuiltable. And so now we're on to item C.
So we're going to apply the first part of ORS 197 and looking at priority lands in the priority of the ORS, and then we're going to apply the Goal 14 factors to those. And that that sort of creates a process of elimination to get to our alternatives. So to remind you, in terms of the soils classes in McMinnville, there's a lot of class one red soil, so stay away from this area soil up here in the northwest area. We've already eliminated this because of the waterway boundary. There's a little bit of it right here as well, and then a little bit right down here. The majority of the soil is class two, the orange. And then over here in the west hills, we have yellow class three soils, and we have it smattered around as well. And then over here on the very far edge, we have class four soils, class four to eight, depending on what's over there. So this is the original submittal that went in in 2005 and the different soils. So if you see this, actually, the submittal from the city didn't include a lot of class one soils. It included some class three soils and then some class two soils in these pieces here.
And some of the problems that the court found with with this this alternative, this with this submission, was again the fatal flaw in how the law how the screening criteria were applied. They were applied in the wrong order. And the court came up with this very interesting and one and an approach that nobody had had thought the legislature intended when it passed ORS 197 to 98. I won't go into the particulars, but it turned the entire process for how urban growth boundaries are drawn around the state on its head. And so this was the big assignment of error that was found. There were a couple of other problems that were found that are on the next next couple of slides. One was that the again, as I mentioned before, the public facility cost and public facility public service extensions weren't applied consistently consistently. There also were some problems found with particular areas that had higher priority for inclusion, soils of higher priority for inclusion, that that the court said were not analyzed adequately. And then finally, there was a find there was a a comment in the courts.
Wanted to point out, that's that's where you had so the place where the court said you didn't you didn't do good enough findings for why you weren't including these areas are the places where we have a combination of class three and class two soils.
Right. And then the last thing was the comment that I made earlier that we hadn't done, the city hadn't done a good enough job of evaluating conflicts with surrounding agricultural uses. So we came up with the the criteria for how that could be evaluated. So go ahead.
I was gonna say, so now we'll walk through the map, and we're going to start with the first selection for priority selection would be exception areas. We don't have enough land in just the exception areas to meet the city's need. We know that already because we have these three little bits left. And so our first map is going to look at exception areas and then what we are calling lower-quality resource areas. So they're they are the areas that have class three and class four soils in them as well. So this map shows those lands relative to that. We don't have there's class three soils over here in north of Old Stone Village, but we don't have that in this map because less than 50% of that study area is class three soil. So the ones we are showing are the ones that have more than 50% class three soils in them. So DJ's going to walk through sort of the high-level results of applying the Goal 14 factors to these.
So most of the exception areas have a common problem, which is that they are isolated. They're isolated, and they're surrounded by a high-value farmland, including one that isn't shown here. I'm not that is near Grand Haven. That small area is it is completely now cut off from the rest of the urban area by conservation easements and by the river. And access to it is difficult. Extending services to it would be difficult. It's a very small area with very little capacity and would be very difficult to to urbanize that and make it part of the rest of the community. The isolation related to Lawson Lane, Old Sheridan Road, and West Hills, Hidden Hills, rather, their isolation is relative. If land around Lawson Lane were urbanized, then it wouldn't be surrounded by farmland, and and it could be integrated into the city pretty easily. The same thing with Old Sheridan Road. And with Hidden Hills, if you annexed all of the land to the east of it, if all of that area came into the urban growth boundary, then it would be proximate to the urban growth boundary. It'd still be a challenging area to urbanize, but at least it would be next to the urban growth boundary, which is one of the criteria for exception lands. That's what makes it a priority. It's an exception area next to an existing urban growth boundary. So we we those are those are challenges related to those exception areas. As far as the resource areas, these are these three areas, two areas also have similar challenges. North of Fox Ridge, it's it's difficult to get to this area without also including the class one soils to the east. That's where the sewer line and roads would have to, not necessarily the roads, but a road, and certainly all the sewer lines would have to go through that area to get to the areas, the 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 green, lower-value resource lands north of Fox Ridge Road. This entire area slopes to the north, so there's no way to sewer it without going building a sewer that would go along the creek and extend into the urban growth boundary. The other thing is that it has to get pumped. It has to be pumped twice to get up into the city sewer system, into the sewage treatment plant. So there's challenges related to that area on sewage. It also has hazards, and it's also a lot of steep slopes, so it would only provide fairly low, low-density housing. West Hills is also is challenging to provide services more for water. It's very expensive because there's no water service out there for most of that area. You'll see a later map just what the water service levels look like. And it also, because of its slope, if you look at the sites in the west hills that are relatively flat, where you could build a little more dense housing, they're small and they're dispersed. And so you would have this very scattered, hodgepodge dispersed development pattern. And because of the slopes, it would mostly be single-family, lower-density housing. And we have a very limited amount of need for that type of housing with the exception areas that have already been included in the urban growth boundaries, as Heather pointed out. The other thing that it's that's difficult to do in those areas is where do you put a commercial center that would provide neighborhoods serving commercials that commercial services that people could walk to? It just the north of Fox Ridge Road and the west hills are not very suitable for that. However, there are some resource lands in the west hills too, as well as north of Fox Ridge Road, that are not high-value farmland, these green areas that we pointed out before. If there was a way to get at those and include those in the boundary, that might be a way because they're not high-value farmland, there wouldn't be a conflict on that on that agricultural resource conflict. on that, um, on that agricultural resource conflict, uh, criteria. Um, they would be, um, logical areas where, uh, if they can provide a needed housing, um, it might be worthwhile cons- it would be worthwhile considering them. Next slide. This is the slide that shows the water pressure zones. There is no water service to pressure zone two today. And there's certainly not water service to pressure zones three, four, and five. We will be getting data soon on what the cost to provide water services in these areas is based on the, or, based on the capacity in these, in these study areas. But it's, it's, they're going to be expensive no matter what. Um, even the areas in pressure zone two are going to be expensive. You can also see that there's, uh, high susceptibility for landslides in, in there, that area that's just north of Fox Ridge, right there. And, uh, there's a, a couple of other spots that are like that. The slopes in these areas are kind of mixed, but most of the slopes are greater than ten percent. And in those areas, it's just not practical to, based on experience in McMinnville as well as many other cities, to expect anything other than fairly low density, single family development.
Higher end too. So if you look at this, you see the darker color under here, this is show that, that's our layer, G I S layer that's showing slopes greater than ten percent.
So there's some flatter spots in there, but it, it's scattered around. It looks like a Rorschach blotter test, you know? There's not, not a big flat base then or parkland area that would be easy, uh, to include. And so how do you, so imagine the, the difficulty of creating neighborhoods in an area that has this kind of terrain. That's, that's its challenge. That alone doesn't eliminate it, but it's a challenge. Uh, and it certainly, uh, impacts the kind of, of development that the area can support.
Yeah, so if you think about the west hills too, and when you see our alternatives, we actually don't include much of this except for these two pieces here. You have a, a, a lot of different factors that are starting to add up here. This is where your wildlife habitat is that we showed you. This is where you have some steeper slopes, which compromises affordable housing, um, the ability to build affordable housing. Um, it's also, uh, has the steeper slopes, which makes it more difficult for high density housing, and then it has the public facility services challenges.
Um, the last thing to review here on, um, these are the, on the exception lands and lower class lands are that, um, the, what we call Norton Lane West, uh, which is near Joe Dancer Park. Uh, it's owned by McMinnville Water and Light, so it really has no residential capacities in public ownership, not private ownership. There are, um, down here in the southwest, if the areas to the east of West Hill South, W H S, and west of Old Sheridan Road Two, which is this area, that have some, uh, higher priority ser- areas for inclusion. If the areas to the east of those were brought into the urban growth boundary, they provide the conduit for gravity sewers to serve those, those properties. So, uh, and the same thing with the area north of Old Sheridan Road. If you include the areas to the east of it in the urban growth boundary, um, through the class one soils, uh, then, then you can get sewers over to serve those higher priority lands.
Oh, you mean here over in Lo- Lawson Lane?
No, I mean north of, uh, Fox Ridge, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Up there. So again, that area can be reached with sewers, but they're, they, it would have to be pumped. The area down in the southwest, um, the land that you're going through to get there isn't class one soils, it's class two soils, and all of it can be served by gravity sewer as opposed to the north of Fox Ridge area where you have to go through class one soils to reach it, and it has to be pumped twice. Um, so that's a challenge for that area to be considered.
So you will see that we include this, what we call West Hill South property in all our, in all our inter- alternatives, because it's, it doesn't have much in the way of anything above class three soil, so it's a priority to bring it in. It doesn't have a lot of goal, uh, fact, goal fourteen factors riding against it, except for access to services which would come through this property. And if you remember with that test under number three of O R S one nine seven, you can bring in these, these types of properties if you need to bring them in to serve your, your, uh, priority soils that you wanna urbanize. So you will see in our, our, our alternatives that we include this and this in most of them.
And I, I've got a, a, a drawing that shows the gravity sewer service for that area. And, uh, in order to serve it, you need to bring in those properties that are to the east of that, that I have class two soils, both the one that's directly east of West Hill South as well as the properties that are in the Cozine Creek Basin, uh, down closer to Old Sheridan Road. Getting ahead of, uh, yes.
Heather, Heather, can I ask a question down, uh, bu- the property that's the West Hill South?
Yeah.
And that big white area, is that the property that's farmland that is, goes towards Hill Road down by Fellows and the bend in the road?
Yeah, so, so to let you know, to give everyone idea where we at, this is Hill Road right here. Running down here. So this is the property that's just west of Hill Road when you're driving downhill road. Right up here is the mound, so to speak, that you can see there, which we've heard anecdotally might be an Indian burial ground, so we're doing research on that right now.
Okay.
But yes, that, that gives them-
Where, where's Redmond Hill Road? Show that to me.
Redmond Hill Road's right along here.
Okay, so that is the big, that is the big, um, agricultural area that's being farmed, that white area right now.
Yes, but everything around McMinnville's being farmed.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You have grapes up here, yes. Um, and then just, uh, another bearing on here would be Peavine, which is right down, help me out, everyone, here.
Peavine Road, yeah.
Right down here, right? But we have other maps that will sort of landmark that for you. I wanted to point out that in all, all three alternatives, we include this property right here. This is an ideal property for U G B expansion. It's class three and class four soils, and it's surrounded by the U G B on three sides.
Are you gonna show us any maps with, uh, potential land on the west side of the city?
Uh, any over here? This, alternatives that are over here?
No, I mean on the opposite side of the map.
On the east side.
On the east side. Did I say west side?
Yes.
But don't worry about it, it's a public meeting, no one will notice.
Side of the screen. We will show you some maps. So we're gonna go next into what we call the higher value, value resource lands, and these are ones that are scoring low with goal fourteen factors. So meaning that they're not, they're not coming in as, um, good, good candidates for our U G B expansion. And the intention here is if you're looking at class two, if you, if you get to a point, so we'll get back here, if you get to a point where you know you're gonna need some class two soils as part of your U G B expansion, you should be looking at all class two soils and applying those goal fourteen factors equally across them. And so, um, we've done that part of the process too. Uh, and this is what that map looks like. And so it's showing, um, these right here. Actually, D J, I should have brought in all this land down here too.
Yeah, right.
So this would be on, this, this land right down here would also be class two soils mostly. So we decided as a team immediately not to recommend any class one soils, so that would be all this here as well as this tip of this particular piece. And so you will see, we've clipped this piece to just look at these area, two areas here as potential. And then, um, the, what we calling north of Old Stone Village, um, when we apply the goal factors to that, and D J can talk through this, it isn't, it doesn't turn up as a candidate, a better candidate site than other class two properties.
Yeah, it, it has, uh, it's not a good candidate for residential. It might be a good area down the road, um, for, as an employment district, but given its isolation from other residential areas, um, it, it's just not a good candidate for, um, for meeting housing needs. Uh, it could meet commercial need, but it's way more land than we really need, uh, for commercial uses right now. Um, it's got access problems and so it would have to be kind of a special kind of commercial use that, or employment use that you might locate there. Uh, and then the north area again is, it's just got, um, uh, a, a lot of red, uh, up there, and, uh, there's some other problems, uh, with that area in terms of accessibility. Um, but that area has got some real problems. And then I already went through the little triangular area that's up by Grand Haven. Sorry, I won't go through that. The, the, um, what's called, um, help me out, the, uh, area that's got some red and some yell, uh, uh, class two, Norton Lane East. Um, if you just clip the red out of that, then that is a, that is an area that might have some, some potential because it's proximate to other residential areas to the south of it. So it has a little more promise, but most of the rest of these areas are, are not good candidates for inclusion because of those constraints that I talked about.
So now we're gonna go into the maps themselves, um, and that was sort of the primer. So the maps, when we started putting the maps together, we put them together based on how to meet that original table of need that I showed you. And again, talking about Tom's model, he has modeled how much housing unit capacity each of these areas can produce based on the slopes that are in there and the unbuiltable lands. Um, and then we have the other non-residential needs too, so we aggregate all that together. This is what we're calling the, so this is our map series number three. So this is how we get back down to what could be potential. And this one we're calling the southwest alternative, um, with Grand Haven West up here. So what we wanted to do is, again, exception lands are your first priority. So we have old, old Sheridan Road and Lawson Lane and Hidden Hills. And so we're like, which ones could we look at bringing in? They each carry land with them to get them into the city so that they can be developable and help achieve need. And based on how much land they carry, it's hard to put the two of them in a singular, uh, plan. So this one is the southwest one that looks at these properties. So you have this one with the class three soils, this, this property that serves, this property with the class three soils. This property is another property that had class three and other soils in it, not more than fifty percent, but more than our other properties that we're looking at at this point in time. And then to get to Old Sheridan Road, this, bringing these properties in would get us to a place where we felt it, we could justify bringing this in and that it would redevelop. So in testing whether or not this meets the need, this plan is, uh, overall about seven hundred and twenty gross acres, six hundred and forty-two buildable acres, and it will generate, um, let's see.
Eleven sixty-one.
Eleven sixty-one in terms of how many, uh, dwelling units it will generate. So it's twenty-eight, uh, less than what we're looking to achieve, but fairly close in terms of meeting all the needs that we need to meet. We've also defined the, um, capacity in terms of the different slopes. So this doesn't have a lot of steep sloped land in it, so we can achieve a higher density on these flatter lands. So that's, that's why the gross, this gross acre number is considerably less than the two thousand and five submittal.
And then this is just a list of pros and cons, or cons and pros because of the way they're arranged on the sheet. There were way more pros than cons. Uh, on the con side, um, the, uh, the inclusion, uh, it doesn't include Lawson Lane, which is the highest priority, uh, exception area. Um, but it doesn't include Lawson Lane because it makes no sense, no sense to include Lawson Lane all by itself. Uh, it's, um, forty-six houses sticking down into the middle of farmland and completely isolated from the rest of the city. Uh, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. But it's high priority for inclusion and, and this alternative doesn't include it. It excludes a lot of higher priority soils in the west hills, but that's because those areas provide very little of the housing need that we have left. Uh, and the growth areas are mostly higher value class two soils, uh, but they lead to, um, higher priority class three and four soils. So that's, that's on the, uh, that, uh, that's kind of a combination of pros and cons. It meets most of our overall housing needs and it also provides, uh, housing that is affordable. Um, at least the land is, is going to be developable at lower cost so that it could be affordable. There's a commercial land swap that's proposed in this area as an efficiency measure. About forty-six acres of the hundred and six commercial, uh, need for commercial land is, uh, uh, um, a rezone inside the existing urban growth boundary. The other sixty acres would be, um, dispersed in the, uh, in, in the areas that are being added to the U G B. And, uh, go ahead.
D J, I can expand on that a little bit. So the need showed a hundred and six acres of commercial land and, um, and the Economic Opportunity Analysis talked about the need for neighborhood serving commercial land. And so we started proportioning that out. And it, the Economic Opportunity Analysis also talked about a surplus of forty-six acres of industrial land. So we thought one of the land use efficiencies could be rezoning industrial land to commercial land, um, especially thinking about the frontage that's there on Highway eighteen, uh, of those two large industrial properties that are just not generating the looks and the interest for industrial on that frontage because of the expense of the visibility of Highway eighteen, but it retains a lot of industrial property behind it, which would develop more readily if the infrastructure was brought to it through the commercial property. So we thought that that would be a good land use efficiency. I will tell you that, um, I'm gonna visit with M E D P and M I P about that next week. I suspect that they aren't gonna be, um, supportive of losing industrial land, so there might be a discussion of, is there another place where industrial land makes more sense? And we may have to come back with some additional amendments for you. But all of your alternatives tonight have that premise included in it.
The other thing on the, the other things on the pro side is that it protects the, um, wildlife habitat on the west side, it avoids landslide hazard areas, and this alternative, uh, enables, uh, two to three neighborhood activity centers to develop, uh, in the southwest on the west side and, uh, in the northwest. Uh, the northeast, um, neighborhood activity center obviously wouldn't happen because we have excluded the north, excuse me, the northwest area, and we've excluded that from this alternative. So there wouldn't be a neighborhood activity center up there. There might be a little bit of neighborhood serving commercial, and there already is some of that, but, um, but it wouldn't be, um, master planned as a, as a village center, uh, if you will.
But we don't have that many of our alternatives because of the class one soils. So up here we have Grand Haven West. We all thought this was, would be, so this is the conservation easement of eighty-one acres, I believe, no, eighty-one in the city, seventy out, so almost a hundred and fifty acres, I believe. Um, and we thought this would, and this is all Shagwin Village, and we thought this would be a nice development. It has a really tight neck here, but it has this confluence of rivers, so we thought, oh, that'd be a nice park. So we were like, let's include that in some of the alternatives as a consideration for housing and parkland. But we also said, you know, based on this southwest alternative, so there's still this basis, another alternative A two, three A two could be picking up that neck of land right here, um, that we identified, that's what we called Norton Lane East, to bring more housing into this residential neighborhood that's developing here. And that, that meets, that, that has the same land need provisions, more or less. It's a little bit more deficient in terms of dwelling units, so we probably need to look at bringing some additional land in with this to achieve the additional dwelling unit need.
But it's fairly small, and the pros and cons are pretty sim- similar. I guess the only, um, difference between these, given that we've just swapped Grand Haven West for Norton Lane East, uh, the only difference would be there's a little bit of class one soil that's left in this Norton Lane East. The only difference would be there's a little bit of class one soil that's left in this Norton Lane East area that isn't present in in Grand Haven West. So that's a little bit of a drawback. But otherwise, it it's pretty similar in its pros and cons and in things that in its advantages to the previous previous alternative.
So Council Drapkin, this gets us to your question of is there anything on the east? So this this is what we're calling the three mile lane alternative. This brings in the Lawson Lane exception area. And as we described before, we we feel that Lawson Lane coming in as an exception area will need land around it to really get the development to occur there in terms of redevelopment to meet the city's need. And so we're looking at this as a three mile lane development here. And so this carries this land. It carries the land that's just north of Highway eighteen. And then again, it carries west hill south, which we're bringing in all the alternatives because that's our predominant class three soil property and the rooted property right here. And so in terms of meeting the need, this one is seven hundred and seventeen acres. So less acreage because we can create more density with this. And then similar type of slope situation here, but our deficit in D U's dwelling units is five.
So this really does balance things out in terms of meeting housing need. It's pretty much spot on in terms of the the capacity, the dwelling unit capacity in the acreages that come in. The problem, one of the things that if you're looking for why we didn't include the west of old the old Sheridan Road exception area, it's not included in this because it is now the isolated exception area. It is completely surrounded by high value farmland. It's a peninsula. If you look closely, every property in there, almost every property in there spans the entire width of the exception area. And if you can imagine the set of dominoes for annexation that would have to occur in there, anybody can block it. And there just isn't any way to if you extended the urban area along the along Old Sheridan Road far enough that it overlapped. At least there are some other ways for people to annex into the city without having to go through all of their neighbors to get there. And so it's just very problematic to integrate into the urban area. Old Sheridan Road is again, if if you include the properties north of it that are on the north side of Old Sheridan Road, then it makes some sense. But in this configuration, without that, it's all by its lonesome out there. And the only way to annex it would be for everybody to agree to petition to annex at the same time and build a sewer line and all hook up to the city sewer and pay city taxes when they've got personally perfectly well functioning septic systems today. I mean, you just start thinking about this, thinking this through. It's a pretty hard sell to get people in this area to want to come into the city. So we left it out for those reasons. It it's not a terribly expensive area to serve, frankly. But it is just a difficult area to urbanize. The other on the pro side, you've got a little more balance in terms of geography and where the growth goes. It's not so concentrated on the southwest side. That has its advantages and disadvantages. It certainly produces scale and momentum going southwest. But this would provide a little more balance, east and west. And it may, I I I haven't seen the public facilities analysis yet to know what the traffic implications would be between these two these two alternatives. I'm sure one of you is thinking that question. I don't have an answer for you. I wish I did, but we will have that answer. And then geographically, again, it protects the critical habitat in the west hills. It meets the housing need. It kind of checks all the other all the other buttons and it avoids the class one soils up in in the northwest.
So the other thing it does that we haven't talked much about is in terms of that smart growth planning, that's a principle of the M G M U P plan. This allows us to look at sort of two neighborhood activity centers in terms of development. So there's an opportunity to really master plan these areas and ensure that, you know, they have the amenities for the twenty minute neighborhood, the commercial amenities, the residential amenities, the parks amenities, and the same over here. So there's it there's enough, it's not fragmented that there's enough land to really do that good planning. Let's see. So this is our last.
If I may question on that map while we're looking at it?
This one?
Yeah, thanks. The T M L E, the one that the mouse is over just then? Yeah. Do do we have a good grasp? And this is future casting, which you may not be able to do, a good grasp on the impact of the floodplain and the water hazard there?
The floodplain is right here. We were not including floodplains in any of this analysis because one of the challenges for the the first and middle, what there was a challenge about floodplain. So all floodplains were removed from the U G B expansion analysis.
So what I'm hearing is we're not allowed to consider floodplain in that?
No.
Okay.
Not not based on the record that exists today from some challenges that occurred back in the day.
Okay, that's the only kind of the main concern I have in that area is it seems the wettest, some of the wettest portions of potential residential area, but.
Yeah, we took all the floodplain out. So you so none none of these areas, well, there's little pieces of floodplain. Well, maybe not. It's where you have drainages rolling through there. But the big floodplains have been taken removed entirely.
It seems like drainages in areas are studied well enough that you they develop and sort of help around drainage versus rising rising water is a little bit harder to build around.
Exactly, good point. And we have drainages all over McNeville.
Right, that was that that rising water area in the future as the environment changes jumped out at me more.
One of the interesting things I think about this area, so this is the thirty-five miles, thirty-five miles, thirty-five acres that came out of the U G B to swap to add this end here to the Evergreen campus. And if this was rezoned to commercial, this whole backside still remains industrial. And we're having discussions about this being sort of an innovation business office park serving the the community. This land right here could could also be zoned into that commercial industrial use and extend down to the vista of the river to create that amenity for that office park. There's planned trails through this whole area to connect to Galen McBee Airport Park for the residential area. So there's there's a lot of interesting things that could occur there to really create, go from frontage along Highway eighteen that's very sporadic and chaotic in turn in terms of the development there and really create some nice neighborhoods.
Yeah, the the opportunity on the N A C seemed really cool there and it could go into the Riverwalk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I can really see this developing very nicely as well as this over here. So.
The other the the thing that the other way to balance that out, if you lose thirty-five acres down there, that's quite a bit of housing that you would lose. But you could go back, you could bring in Grand Haven or you could go back over to the west side, southwest side, and maybe bring in some of that land and possibly even get down far enough that maybe Old Sheridan Road would come in. That might result in a theoretical surplus, but frankly, I don't know. It's been fourteen years. Not one application for annexation and redevelopment has occurred in any exception area that's been brought into the urban growth boundary. Not here, and that's pretty much true statewide. So exception areas as inventory for buildable land in urban areas as a policy, that hasn't been a much of a success story.
But but there so there are so what DJ is getting at is these will tweak a little bit as we continue to push on the need and talk to M I P and M E D P and there, you know, we're deficient. This one's actually not that deficient, but if this if we restore the forty-six acres of industrial land, then it would be deficient. And so there's ways of picking up other little pieces. And we might be able to pick this up, DJ, and and put it in and get both exception areas in.
Yeah.
So in the interest of time, I'm going to go to the hybrid alternative. This is our last alternative for you. So this this picks up land on both sides here and then brings in remember those two little pieces we talked about in the west hills that we felt wasn't one, didn't have the agricultural incompatibility issues, didn't have the hazard issues necessarily. There's a little piece of landslide hazard in here. But we thought that these little pieces we could pick up and bring in if if we wanted to continue to expand into the west hills. They don't bring a lot of density with them, so it doesn't really change much. This one has a deficit of about seventy-seven dwelling units. So we would continue to need to look for additional land to add to this. But we're about seven hundred and fourteen acres with this hybrid. And this brings in pros and cons very similar to the the last one that we just talked about. So those are our three alternatives. This sort of table sums them all up. And and you can see in terms of the gross acres, how it changes a little bit based on density. But not dramatically because we we are now in areas that don't have a lot of steep slopes. So it's not land consumptive. And then also where we're at in terms of the tar our target in the end was five point seven residents for gross acre and where we're at with that. And then also our deficit that we're currently carrying through all of these alternatives here. And this shows the need that we were trying to make. So this gets us fairly close and each of these in gross acres is less than the original two thousand and five central. So what we need from you is and there and because of the deficit, there's still opportunity to look at how to fulfill that because we're supposed to be showing how we meet the need. So those two little areas in the west hills, just to share with you what we call two A brings in forty-eight dwelling units. That's on the north side and to be ninety-two dwelling units, that would be on the south side of that little nook. Let's see, north and south, right? And then we also talked about, you know, we we cut this piece out because we were looking at parcels. But this piece comes down to the river. It's about twenty acres, I believe, twenty gross acres. And so if we brought in this piece all the way down to the river on some some of the alternatives, we would be right dead on with our needs at that point in time. So for you as a discussion, I know you've had a long night and this is a lot of information, but we do need to get to one scenario by the end of the month for us to continue to move forward in an effective way. So the question to you is how do you want to do that? Do you feel after tonight, you can give us some high level direction and tell us to come back with one for you? That's based on the fact that we're coming back with one and we're going to start create findings for it. So we can tweak it, but we can't do some wholesale huge changes. Or do you want to do sort of a longer charrette work session and really dive into the details? What we would say is we would want to schedule that sometime in the next two weeks and take about two hours with you. It could be a public work session, so the public could not participate necessarily, but but see your discussion. Because with COVID, we're not, you know, the public piece of this is we've been struggling with that. We're trying to do lots of presentations to you so that we can make it as public as possible. But there's that additional opportunity for that. And we could do it on a Saturday morning or we could pick an evening to do that.
So. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I from the various slides that you showed, I have a fairly clear idea of what seems to make sense to me generally. However, there's some nuances between a few of those slides where I feel like I just need more, you know, real time evaluation, right? I need to to look at those areas. I I need to talk to the people, see see what impacts would be because some of those maps included very, very minute differences, but they would impact different neighborhoods fairly significantly. And and I just can't internalize completely what it would look like just from those maps. And so is there? Is there? I mean, I I would be ready to move in kind of a general direction this evening, but that's not what you're asking for. You're asking for specifics. I also don't feel like I necessarily need a longer work session. They do feel like it needs more than I need more ti- I I wouldn't feel right making a decision on a singular map tonight without going out, evaluating the areas, talking to people in the neighborhoods, et cetera. So is there any? Is there any mid-level option? Sorry, sorry to ask. I know you're asking for something very clear and I'm asking for something not clear, but I'm.
And then I I would also encourage you to remember, again, the planning piece of all this, especially when we get into the legal realm, is science and not emotion. And so when making these decisions, we need to have findings for them. And and these findings need to be really tight because if they're challenged, that's more time and money for the city. And so we're doing everything we can to make sure we're writing the best findings that we can. And so I know it's tough to talk about growth and adjacency to neighborhoods, but I also want to make sure that we are helping you as a decision making body, making informed decisions under the legal framework in which we're working.
Thank you, Heather. Any other questions, Remy? You laid that out on the line.
I'd like to know what I'd like to know what Commissioner Drabbins, where where what geographic areas or what issues do you have concerns around?
So what I I I'm going to answer your question in the reverse. What I was drawn to were your later maps in the your three series here. And one thing that I wanted to be able to do is to kind of hold them up side by side and look at them. To to me, there were the obvious pieces as were addressed in the presentation. There was the piece that was previously evaluated as well with H B forty seventy-nine, which is surrounded on three sides already by city property. It doesn't have high value farmland, et cetera. To me, that's a that's very.
That's in all the alternatives.
That's in all the terms, right? So that's it, that's 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 easy. I mean, I like all of those parts of it. And but then the nuances between these last three maps, I'm playing a little bit of a game of memory between between them.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing you say, Council Drapkin, is you like it more distributed instead of one. So the first map, I'll go back to the first map. So the last three, the last two maps, actually, the first the first map, which is what we call three A, had two parts, one and two. That was everything was concentrated over here and that included Old Sheridan Road and didn't have this over here, but it had this little piece for one and Grand Haven West for the other. And what I'm hearing from you is you like it more nestled and distributed like this.
I do, but I don't quite from this presentation understand the impact of including Grand Haven West versus another area or 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 the converse of that scenario.
Yeah, so that's that's what that's so each of these pieces have a have a fairly in-depth findings document associated with them. And, you know, based on having an hour, an hour and a half with you tonight, we didn't feel comfortable going into that depth of detail. But that's what we would do in a longer work session with you.
Okay, well, that's enough for me for right now. I'd love to hear from my fellow counselors, Mayor. Thank you.
So I'm just going to kind of run down Zach with the background that you have. What's your thoughts as we sit here?
Yeah, I'm 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 drawn to three B and C. I think three B to me is where I'm just I'm 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 circling the drain on. And to quote a wise old planner I once knew, I like it for its ability to be nestled and distributed where wisely. That that phrase articulated how just, you know, I don't know how to describe looking at art, but the difference between the first one jarred me a little bit. but the difference between, the first one jarred me a little bit, and as you clicked through, it did appear, as you said, more nestled and distributed, and I think that's appropriate. I, I really like the potential of the three-mile, the T N L E area down there. So, so to me, the ones that don't include that, I'm sort of not in the realm of consideration on. Something to me about the, in three C, having more steep slope, do I interpret that right, or am I totally wrong? It is not wrong, but just seems a little bit more daunting and an option that it doesn't have more up into the hills there. That's why I'm going, going away from up into the hills more.
The difference, and the difference between three B and three C is very, very subtle. It's this little piece down here, southwest oh-six R two.
Right, then it gets, kicks up.
Is swapped out for these two.
Over there a little bit more, right? And, and so I think maybe part of it is also it's chopped up a little more, and I like less chopped up a little bit more.
Hard to master plan chopped up.
It's hard to master plan chopped up, that wise old planner used to tell me. And, and so I think, but to Remy's point, I, I, I'm trying to understand the impact of those particular areas, if that's what we're coming down to. I don't know how I could get there, and I don't know if it's warranted a, a longer, bigger, better presentation, I fear that. But so I think those are my thoughts for now, is that I'm, I'm zeroing in on three B. Sounds like you guys still have more work to fine-tune the, the deck furniture in, in any one of these that we go on. And so perhaps in your fine-tuning, we may be able to understand the nuanced differences between the two. And so if we, I feel comfortable enough pushing forward with three B and continuing to learn the differences and having an opportunity to go out there and look. But, but I'm, I'm more pushing on three B.
Thank you, Zach, for your, your analysis. Let's run over to Adam. What are your thoughts at this point, Adam?
So I'd like to start off with saying that, just disclosure that I do have a family member that owns some property in some of this. There's no direct conflict. I don't own any property in it. That won't affect my decision. But I would say I do like that nestled approach a little bit better just from a deploying resources standpoint. Fire, police, things like that. When you're looking at it that way, I think we get more bang for our buck when, when we don't have quite as long of a run for that. I like the idea of that kind of being a riverwalk maybe someday for long-term planning. The kind of difference between all those three C maps, I'm still trying to wrap my head all around that, like Remy was saying. And kind of what, what little slivers of land trade for other little slivers of land and the exact benefits and pros and cons to each one of those. So I don't think I could give, Heather, I don't think I can give you like exact direction tonight, but I don't know if we need another two-hour work session for me to get there.
What about, so what I'm hearing from all of you, or, or, and, and Mayor, you can keep it on the line, but as we're thinking, as people are providing their input, if we collect an input and then come back and do like another hour work session over the next two weeks, would that be helpful? And then we can bring back a couple refinements of the input that we received.
Yeah, I would be, I would be good with that. I, the other question I have is when you're looking at these maps, and I know to keep emotion out of it, like you were saying, but just like the viability of those pieces of land actually being developed and not just being, for lack of a better term, like Riverside Drive properties twenty years from now.
Yeah, so I can, I can tell you that those areas that aren't exception areas, most property owners have been visiting with me about our U G B prospects for the last four years since the, I got here. So they're all watching this, their lawyers and themselves are all watching this process as we go. So I don't think you'll find the larger tracts are going to fall into the same non-development role that the exception areas do, and that's the difference between them, right? The exception areas, people are happy. If you're developed, the residential areas, people are happy with the little bit of elbow room that they have there.
Well, okay. Let's move over to Sal. What are your thoughts, Sal?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, Heather, thank you for the comprehensive report. Always very detailed. I have a hard time really making a concrete decision, mostly not, not because the plans weren't detailed or because they weren't well thought out, but just because I'd like to hear from some stakeholders. So I just, I don't feel like I need another lengthy work session, but I would like to hear, you know, to make sure that we have an opportunity for the public to come in, be heard on this issue to the extent that people want to be heard. And in the absence of any significant red flags, like the other councilors, I'm kind of leaning towards the three B and three C model, but it's hard for me to make a determination even with an explanation of slight differences in the plans without actually hearing from people who might be affected by it.
So I'm thinking out loud here, because, because the way for you to hear about it is the public hearing process, right? Because then you hear about it, and the rest of the decision-making body hears about it, and the Board of County Commissioners hear about it. You're all hearing the same thing. I wonder, and DJ, I'm brainstorming, but could we start the public hearing process earlier in October? And my team's gonna, I, I know they're all just having heart attacks in their chairs right now. And I feel that, you guys, I feel it, I feel you guys doing this. But start the public hearing process earlier so that we can have an initial public hearing based on that, maybe tweak a little bit, come back with a continued public hearing, and maybe DJ bring one or two versions of different scenarios that are slightly different, that we can have findings for that are similar. You see what I'm saying? So what I hear from City Council is they want, they want good time to hear from the public. It's best for them all to hear the same thing from the public than individually to make this type of decision. How do we set that up for them?
So one of the drawbacks to doing that through, as part of a formal public hearing is that before the public hearings can start, we need to have adoption-ready ordinance and implementation measures, give forty-five-day notice, submit that stuff to D L C D. And accelerating that timetable by sixty days would be, just from a resource standpoint, very difficult.
Okay, so what if we had?
But, on, on the other hand, there's certainly nothing that would preclude us from holding a, an informational meeting in the light of day colders, really doing some strong outreach to property owners and to interest groups and having an opportunity for everybody to weigh in and for the legislators to listen to that, to those comments collectively.
Yeah, so, so I'm assuming that the legislators would want to have transparency and fairness for who can participate in that. And so we had a planned joint work session between City Council and the Board of County Commissioners to present a final map. Maybe we move that up, put more time behind it because that will be a fairly lengthy meeting to be able to hear from everybody and then get a decision from there and then start creating the final documents.
And that, that could involve draft policy language, draft proposals for how the regulatory framework changes to implement it. We could get, we could drill down a little bit so that it's not just colors on a map, but it's a little more detailed than that.
Yeah, yeah, the legal stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, go ahead, Remy, and then we'll go to Kelly. I'd like to get her input before we-
Just, just to, just to add in, since I kind of launched this conversation of, in terms of kind of the indecisiveness between, between these, as I'm using your presentation that was sent out in advance of the council meeting to just flip back and forth between them comparatively. I mean, I can see where, I can see where the logic lies to me, which is most definitely within the three B map. And, and a lot of that just came out, actually, from the most informal part of the presentation, but was the exchange in which you and Count, Director Richards and Counselor Gary talked about master planning and how much harder it is to master plan when it's chopped up. And I think sometimes we just need to hear things like that and be reminded of them. So if I was looking for my Goldilocks map, that, for me, it would definitely be three B.
So that's added some, another piece. I've got Zach, Adam, and Remy now feeling really good there. And then Sal was between three B, three C, but with more input. Kelly, let's get a sense from where you're sitting.
I'm three B all the way. I hate to have you guys push forward a public hearing early, but I guess that remains to be seen.
Yeah, I'm going to take that, that off the table because DJ's right. We can't perform to that. A public work session is something else entirely, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't have final documents ready for a public hearing earlier.
Okay, so we've really got a, a direction. If, if, we're looking at three B right now, we've got four solidly sitting in that arena. With Wendy not being here tonight, and she, you know, has a lot of expertises in this and being the, you know, the planning chair for so many years, I, I don't know if she's had an opportunity to look at this, but I think, Heather, you've got a real focus on three B with the ability to bring those extra few pieces that we're waiting this week. And maybe we do have a public work session just to get a little bit of transparency. But again, remember, in that process, it tends to be much more emotional. That gets, gets us outside of the realms that sometimes we need to be involved in when we're dealing with land use. So I think we've had good discussion tonight. I think we've laid that back in your lap. What would you then give us as a suggestion, given the form, the, the input that we've given you this evening, Heather?
I think what I'll do, if, if it makes sense, we're trying to get in front of the Board of County Commissioners, and so we'll do a similar thing, but let them know you guys were leaning towards three B. We're going to continue to push and pull on it according to effect a little bit. But maybe we had planned to have, so Next Steps, I had on Next Steps, an October joint meeting with the C C B O C C to discuss final map and findings. Maybe we make that a, a, some, some sort of public open house, something, something. I don't know how to structure within the COVID environment, but we create a structure where we can bring this information to you and the public, and then you have the opportunity to hear from the public before you go into a public hearing process.
I like that, I like that provision. DJ?
Just one thing that I wanted to say about three B is, and to Zach's very good point about how it's easier to master plan big pieces than small pieces. And we haven't yet heard from the economic development interests. We're not locked down on three B. It can still, there still may be some modifications that we could do, like the one that Heather went through. But what I'm hearing from Council is that you like the idea of having some balance between east and west and having a strong neighborhood development over here on the southeast along with strong neighborhood development in the southwest. That's the balance that, between these, with this option that you, that you favor. Is that a good summary?
I think that's a good summary from my perspective as, as I reach it.
I have one question on three B since DJ, you were looking at that and talking, if you don't mind. And it goes back to sort of a discussion. You, the tweaks to you, DJ and Heather were having on three B in relation to the Three Mile Lane, and as we talked about, M, M E B D P or those that are looking at sort of that Innovation Center out there at the airport area. If we look at, you mentioned maybe if more of that needs to be commercial, looking at the Grand Haven area. Can you, can you, can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so, so again, we have, we came forward with a land use efficiency.
Sorry, I, I can't totally hear you, Heather.
We came forward with a land use efficiency to rezone forty-six acres of industrial land within the existing U G B to commercial so that the need outside the U G B for commercial would only be sixty acres. What that does, though, is it takes land supply off the charts for industrial use, future industrial users. And, and there is considerable concern from M I P and M E D P about that. I haven't even had the meetings with them, but I know that there are concerns about that. So if there was a, a way, but we do think it's much more efficient to have commercial here along Highway eighteen because the industrial is happening. So if there was a way for us to look at how to have, keep the industrial land as is, and we had some discussions about coming up here, there's land just south of Cascade Steel that we could look at, that was looked at in the first and middle for residential and was eliminated because it doesn't serve residential needs, but it would serve industrial needs. And so that might be a nice little fix because it would allow some expansion up there. But those are sort of the tweaks and refinements that we could start looking at. We could also look at, so we've talked about this Office Business Park. There's, in McMinnville, we don't have an Office Business Park area. And to have this nice Office Business Park down here, for it to have access to the vista of the river and the flood plain, that would be a nice amenity too. So I don't know, we can work through all of those things.
Well, and, and Heather, I also, you know, we've got Scott Cooper on, and we're just keeping this among the councilors tonight, but his vast experience with development around airports and some of those types of things, I think he could bring some good value just in the discussion for us also.
Yes, yeah, and Scott and I have talked very briefly. That's why he's on tonight to listen to this, and we will continue to talk. And then I will share this with M E D P and M I P, I think, next week, if that's correct, Scott.
Good.
Thanks for that, drill down.
Any, any last questions among councilors this evening? I think we've got a direction that Heather and then her staff can move forward. We're not looking at another two-hour presentation, but the tweaking's, a little more tweaking's, a little more information, and then be headed towards maybe a, what I've written down as a, an opportunity to have a public open house in preparation for our discussion with the county commissioners.
Yeah, well, we would set it up where it's you and the, it would be a meeting of the county commissioners and the city council, so you could all hear the public open-
The same, the same, yeah, the same.
But it'd be an opportunity for people to participate and talk about things without being in a formal public hearing environment.
Good, good. Any other direction from Council? Heather, thank you, staff, thank you. A long evening. I mean, two of the most difficult topics that I think we have to deal with is finance and land use, and we did it all in one evening. So again, thank you. So I, I'm just going to go back up. And Jeff, do you have any closing thoughts for us? Do you feel comfortable with the, the, the discussion we had this evening?
Yes, we already do. Thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Okay, well, with that being said, thank you for the better part of your evening. And so this concludes our work session on the sixteenth of September. Go be with your families. Thanks, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you.